The list of Guan is called into session. Senator Luhon, can we have a motion to adopt the agenda dated July 16, 2007?
Mr. Speaker, a motion to adopt the agenda dated July 16, 2007.
On that motion without objection, the motion. Not yet. The motion to adopt the agenda, is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Could we have a motion to, I think everyone's here, Ben. Ben, I think everyone's back. Okay. Can we have a motion to waive items two, three, and four?
Speaker, motion to waive the items on two, three, and four.
On that motion without objection, so ordered. Roll call.
Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Espaldón. Speaker Forbes.
Here.
Senator Guthards. Senator Ishizaki. Senator Luhon. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispichu. Senator Shimisou. Senator Tenorio. Senator Ompinco. Senator Wampet. Mr. Speaker, I wish to report there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Luhon. Messages from Imagallah in Guam. On messages from Imagallah in Guam. There are, so. Motion to amend.
Mr. Speaker. I think that since it's a special session, we should have the Legislative Secretary to, or the record, yeah Legislative, or the Clerk of the Legislature to read the call of the Governor.
Okay. Let's go ahead and read.
July 13, 2007, the Honorable Mark Forbes, Speaker, Eminem of 29, in the legislature in Guam, 155 Hessler Street, at Gottenia Guam, 96910. Up for day Speaker Forbes, transmitted herewith his proposed legislation to increase the authorization levels for the executive brands to sufficient levels in order to certify funds for the operation of the executive brands for fiscal year 2007. If the authorization levels for the executive brands are not increased, there will be insufficient funds to continue the operations of the executive brands for the remainder of fiscal year 2007. Therefore, public interest requires that a special session be convened to act on the attached legislation. I, Imagallah in Guam, Governor Guam, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Organic Act of Guam as amended and the laws of Guam, call special session of the legislature on Monday, July 16, 2007, at 10 o'clock a.m. Since here is an Imagallah in, FB, Camacho, Imagallah in Guam, Governor Guam.
On introduction, first reading of bills, Senator Luhon. You wanted the bill read too, or do you? The whole bill? Okay, could the Clerk read the title prior to the motion?
Bill number one, parentheses one dash S, introduced by the Committee on Calendar by request of Imagallah in Guam, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. An act to provide supplemental appropriations for the operations of the executive brands of the Government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2007.
Okay, Senator Luhon, a motion to consider to introduce and having received its full first reading.
Mr. Speaker, motion to bill number one, one S, that has been read and considered to be introduced.
To be introduced. On that motion without objection, so ordered. Any member wish to make a motion? There are no legislative concurrences. We are now at the top of second reading.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place bill one dash one S, is that one five?
Yes.
One S, excuse me, one S, Committee on Calendar by request of Imagallah in Guam, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, placed into the third reading and resolved into the committee of the whole.
Okay. We are going to resolve in the committee of the whole. It is unnecessary to declare an emergency as it has been sent to slip by the Governor for special session. So no declaration of emergency is required. We are now in committee of the whole. We'll take a brief recess so that we can set up the hall here for committee of the whole. Senator Calvo, you'll be chairing the committee of the whole? The committee of the whole will be chaired by Senator Calvo.
And then to my colleagues, we are going to go again via chapter, and we'll go section by section. I remind my folks, everyone has an opportunity to speak, but I'm going to allow again every senator to make their, either their comments or their questions to the members of committee. And again, I'm going to beg your indulgence. You can chime in if there is an amendment or proposed amendment, but again, everyone will be allowed the opportunity to speak in this matter, okay? And with that, I'll be looking for the first individual that wishes to testify, Speaker, Senator Mark Forbes. We are not, actually, oh, wait a minute. We're in section one. Let's go over, we have section one, short title. Okay. If there's no comment on section one, section two. Speaker Forbes.
I can't help but notice, looking at section two, that the only item under general fund revenues that is being amended here is item B, federal sources. And you are striking the figure of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars in, I mean, I'm sorry, three hundred twenty-nine thousand and twenty-nine dollars, changing it to eighty thousand, five hundred and four, I mean, eighty million, five hundred and four thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. As precise a number as I have ever seen, right down to the penny. I presume that that is the twenty-one thousand some, excuse me, twenty-one million odd thousand dollars that magically appeared. Is that the case?
Before they respond to that, I'm sorry, I just saw something in section one that I could just ask, just a real quick question.
Back on section one, please.
Thank you.
Senator Panglinen.
Yeah, under line eight, it's kind of unusual, I don't, this is not a normal language that usually appears, says, "In the event any appropriation in this act is found contrary to federal law, all portions not so found shall remain valid." Do you anticipate anything at all in this appropriation with only that one change in section two being contrary to federal law? And is there any change or any information that you have that may put the validity of what's being appropriated in section two to be invalid or inconsistent with any federal law, any memorandum of understanding you have, et cetera, et cetera?
I think the twenty-one million dollars that have, that has been agreed to between Gov. Guam and the Department of IRS is final. It's not going to change, but, you know, there are other.
Can we have that? Is that available?
Which one?
Memorandum of Understanding. So that.
The reason, the reason why it wasn't made public at that time.
Oh, I haven't asked that question yet.
Okay, so if a copy can be provided to the legislature.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Back to section.
Oh, no problem at all. Actually, that's a very interesting.
Can I just make clarification? Joe, you want?
No, I believe we had to check with IRS if we could disclose the information that MOU. Would that be all right?
Wait, you can't give us the MOU?
We just want to make sure. That's all.
Can the Governor disclose it? I think he disclosed it.
We'll ask them. The reason why we would like to clear it with them is because we have this relationship with them now. They've been really helpful in a lot of ways with the government that we noticed wasn't happening in the past, and if we kind of like sway away from not help, not at least informing them that we are going to do something, they might start to stray away from the relationship we have.
Well, let me remind you, the relationship is between the IRS and the Government of Guam, and this legislature is part of the Government of Guam. So any relationship, if it's a, you're telling me you have a personal relationship with them? That's a different matter. But if it's a relationship of government to government, then the legislature is part of the Government of Guam.
Yes, I agree with that.
Don't you think it's rather unprecedented to consider the possibility the Governor can enter into secret codicils that are bound by some outside secret force that the members of the legislature and the people of Guam are not privy to? I mean, that just sounds like unprecedented to me. I mean, I just assumed that you guys would be able to provide us with copies of the MOU without difficulty.
We're assuming we're providing the money.
Yeah. I mean, you're asking us to appropriate the money and we're not allowed to see the documentation that transfers it to us?
You know, with our dealings with IRS, there are a lot of times that they'll request us not to divulge such information. This, you know, this thing with the section thirty, the twenty-one million.
You're telling me that Sean Guma Tautau can know about this, but the elected members of this legislature cannot?
Actually, I'm going to, there is a very good dialogue going here, but I want to try to keep some order, some semblance of order here.
I will draw, because I'm really, I just find, I was shocked when I heard that.
Again, the committee.
Somehow this information is somehow top secret, because I am going to ask some questions about it later on. Back to where I was.
We're back, okay, as, section one, so if there's no other comments or questions, section.
Just on section one.
Section one.
If you look at section one and also on section three, it seems that they're similar in nature, even though maybe it's the severability clause that is, and so, if you look at it, it's similar, generally speaking, except for the section three, it has application to any person or circumstances. So, is that an intentional redundancy, though? As far as the section one and section two?
Ask him, please.
Yeah, the severability clause.
Oh, section five? Do you mean section five?
Yes, section five, yeah. And then section one, too. The, and the last, Senator, the Speaker and Senator Ben Panglinen, and that's that severability clause there, too.
Well, the, yes, Mr. Speaker, the section one is consistent with section five, which is the severability clause. If you wanted to, if the members wanted to delete the sentence in the section one, that's certainly, you know, up to the body, but it does contain the severability clause, which would then.
So, I'll be still in order if I were to delete on line eight, on page one, the last sentence. Would that be in any conflict? Yeah. In the event that any appropriation then goes to line nine.
Okay, and if there's no objection to the amendment, amendment carries. Okay, so deleted, last sentence in section one. On section one, Senator Tenorio? Okay. Back to section, nothing on section one, section two. Speaker Forbes.
Once again, I just want to be clear that the change in federal sources, item B, on line thirteen of this bill, is intended to reflect the funds, the twenty-one million dollars and change that miraculously appeared. Would someone like to answer the question? Does the change on line thirteen, for federal sources, does that, to the penny, reflect the twenty-one million dollars and change that miraculously appeared?
Well, first of all, it is reflective, and secondly, it's not, it did not miraculously appear.
Well, we'll get to that in a minute.
Art Ilagan.
We'll get to that in a minute, don't worry about it. Okay. Now, I'm curious, if this is the only change in revenues that is being suggested in this bill, are we to infer then, as a result, that every other revenue item contained in the revenue estimates that are part of public law twenty-nine dash two, are to infer that the administration's position is those numbers should remain intact?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, if yes is the response. Art, how much did you collect in additional revenue through the amnesty program?
I believe with real property tax, we collected approximately two point one, and that's amnesty. There were some current real property taxes that we collected during that period.
This is, this number is the same as the thirty million dollar number that was estimated in public law twenty-nine dash two. Are we talking apples and apples and apples and oranges? So instead of collecting thirty, we collected two point what?
No, that's real property tax.
Make sure we're talking everything.
Okay.
All categories.
Okay, it's two point one of real property taxes and other taxes such as income tax, GRT, we collected approximately seven point something.
Can you tell me exactly?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have my records with me.
Did you not think that revenues would be part of this discussion today? Does one of you have a cell phone with which you can contact someone who can provide this legislature with exact figures? These are no longer revenue estimates, these are numbers that are exact, they do affect appropriation levels. I know we have this cavalier approach to how we do this sometimes, unfortunately, but I'd like to know exactly what you collected, because that number is reflected in twenty-nine dash two.
We don't have the total figures right now.
Okay, do you have a reasonable estimate then? What's your reasonable estimate?
Approximately a little over nine million dollars.
Plus the two, or not counting?
A little over nine million dollars.
Altogether. So, a number that in twenty-nine dash two is thirty million dollars is in fact nine million. Does the administration not feel that that is something that ought to be addressed since we happen to be in revenues, or do we continue the mythology that we collected thirty million
Mr. Speaker, I think the only, the reason why we're here is just to ensure that the appropriation levels, the authorization levels are up to the point.
Certainly, and in order to do that, we have to have a clear idea of what our revenue situation is. We can't just look isolated at the twenty-one million dollars. We have to take a look at the overall revenue picture of the Governor of Guam to make sure we don't overappropriate. God forbid we should do that. Now, I don't know why you chose to send us a bill that talks about revenues and then isolates just the twenty-one million dollars that came in from IRS with absolutely no reflection on what has happened in the real world in every other revenue category, but having made that decision to send us a bill like this, then you can expect you're going to get questions about everything else. So do you agree or disagree that if we are to adopt revenues, which is what we're doing here, that it ought to reflect the reality of the amnesty program, for example? It's not the only example. Or should we continue to have this myth? Because that's what it is. We have a piece of paper that is a law of Guam floating around out there that says the amnesty program is going to collect thirty million dollars. Well, the amnesty program's over. If it didn't collect thirty and it only collected nine, that'd be nice to know, since that's a twenty-one million dollar difference. Could Revantax provide us at its most, at its earliest convenience with, with their best guess as to what in fact was collected in amnesty?
Yes, we'll get that.
By this afternoon? Okay, another question. In fact, tell you what, let me just take a look at the revenues in twenty-nine dash two. Let me just ask you some questions about them, because I'm curious. For some reason, my copy, okay. During the, during the discussion on twenty-nine dash two, there was a figure that was being tossed around quite a bit called the base revenue estimate. In other words, the revenue estimate before you took into account changes to the DeSantos Act and other changes that were made. What was that figure? Does anybody recall? We had a lot of discussion about it, I just wonder if anybody here remembers what that Not the Standard and Poor's presentation, nuh nuh nuh. I want to know about the discussion we had during twenty-nine dash two. I will note, by the way, that with the exception of Lou and Art, for the most part, no one is here who is actually part of the discussion on twenty-nine dash two. That notwithstanding, does anybody remember what you kept telling us that figure was?
I have their presentation right in front of me.
No, 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 I'm not interested in their Standard and Poor's presentation. I am totally disinterested in the Standard and Poor's presentation. What I am interested in is the presentation made to the legislature during the deliberations on twenty-nine dash two. No one recalls the number that the administration told us was the base revenue estimate at that Yeah, Art, I think you got it. You want to answer?
I think it was four thirty.
Yeah, it was approximately four hundred and thirty-four million dollars. Not too long after the conclusion of our discussion on twenty-nine dash two, where there was a goal line stand on the idea that the base revenue estimate, meaning those, that revenue estimate prior to the implementation of new fees and the removal of the, and the amendment of the DeSantos exemptions and things of that nature, there was a presentation made before Standard and Poor's, and a base revenue estimate number was provided to them. Can anybody sitting there tell me what that number was?
I'm, I asked only two.
Again, I just want to keep track of these numbers as they move. Now, I was here for eight weeks, almost nine, and every step of the way I was told four thirty-four, four thirty-four. I asked, "You sure?", and I was told four thirty-four. And I said, "You know, I'm looking at the actuals and I, I'm not sure that that's going to add up to four." Yep, four thirty-four. And I said, "You sure?", well, there's a range. "What's the range?", "Well, it's between zero and eight billion dollars." You know, I got one of these big, big range kind of answers, but four thirty-four. That's what I kept hearing. So I just, I always want to make that real clear, that, kind of curious about how that all plays out. How long do you think it'll take to get that Standard and Poor's number? Well, write it to them, if we have it and they don't.
Actually, we have a copy.
Then why don't you provide it to someone who wishes to answer the question?
This is, this is the report that was submitted to Standard and Poor's from you folks, but we have a copy, so who cares to read it?
You're going to make poor Art do it? Is Art the revenue estimate guy?
Who's the revenue? Whoever will. This is your work.
Yeah, but, I mean, we keep running to Art every minute, you know, to verify numbers. I don't mind doing that for the IRS stuff, because that's Art's bailiwick, but Art doesn't come up with revenue estimates, as best I can tell. So whoever is on this table that has some left-handed acquaintance with revenue estimates, could you just grab the Standard and, I mean, someone must have worked on this, can you grab the Standard and Poor's thing and tell us what you told Standard and Poor's the base revenue estimate was?
Okay, give me back my copy, please.
Okay. According to the Standard and Poor's presentation, the base tracking was four fifty-four point eight million?
Got it. All right, that's all. So, what date was the Standard and Poor's presentation made? Does anybody here remember? I mean, didn't you guys make the presentation yourselves?
June sometime. First week of June.
First week of June. When was twenty-nine dash two signed into law? Remember? No, it was definitely before the Standard and Poor's, I just wanted to see if someone can inform me about the date of the Governor's signature on it. Sometime in April, sound about right? Oh, no, May. Sometime around May 21st, 2007? Is that accurate? Dear Mr. Speaker, this is to inform you that I've signed into law Bill 74 and is now public law twenty-nine oh two, but not without certain reservations. May 21st, 2007, does that sound right? Guys, is that when the Governor signed?
I think it's May 18th. May 18th, if I remember, because of the fees. I remember the fees going into effect.
Ah, okay, so it's signed May 18th and transmitted to the legislature May 21st. Okay. So between May 18th and early June sometime, when was the Standard and Poor's presentation? June what? When did you make the presentation to Standard and Poor's? June?
June 4th, around June 4th, first week of June.
The first week of June. And May 18th, that's, how many days in May? I'm lousy at this, I don't know how many days are in each month, but how many days are there in May? Thirty-one, so the difference between May 18th, when it was signed, and thirty-one days is how many days about? Thirteen days and then four more days. Thirteen days and then four more days. So seventeen days. Not five months, not thirty months, not one year, not one month. Approximately seventeen days after the governor signed into law a bill that says that the base revenue estimate is only 434, something that representatives of the administration insisted upon during the entire deliberation of that particular bill, seventeen days later, the same administration tells Standard and Poor's that no, the base revenue estimate is 454. What happened?
The same number, Mr. Speaker, that was presented to Standard and Poor's of $454.8 million is the same number that was reported to the legislature in support of 2902.
That's the most, that's the most interesting thing I've ever heard because I specifically asked, specifically asked on at least two or three dozen occasions why everyone was sticking with 434 when the actuals did not seem to bear that out. I know what conversations I had on exactly this topic. I was assured that 434 was the proper conservative estimate. I don't understand why seventeen days later, after the signing of that bill, an outside party is given a different number. Now, my question to you is, when you look at those basic revenues without, and I hope you have a way of breaking this out because this is what I want to know. Without taking into account the increase in fees that was passed in 29-2, or the elimination of the Dave Santos exemptions that was passed in 29-2, or any revenue generating measure, to use the term that is used, what are we tracking now?
Mr. Speaker, are you referring to the same, the same number to explain the same number?
I'm desperately trying to compare apples to apples.
Okay. What it is, and I apologize, I'm not sure what was represented to you in 29-
Okay, timeout. Then that, that's a perfect answer. Mr. Chairman, I would like to request that Mr. Carlos Bernalio and individuals who were present during 29-2 and the deliberations they're on be asked to attend this particular, because I was really worried about this. I was worried that what was going to happen was because of the reshuffling of everyone, that we were going to have this big time warp, that 29-2, everything was going to be, "Well, I don't know, I don't know, I wasn't making presentations then", and that the people that were making presentations then are not present here. So I'm not expecting him to come in the next five minutes. And I realize he's classified now and no longer a part of the cabinet. But I really do feel that people who did speak to us on 29-2 need to also be present as we deliberate this bill, so that we're comparing apples to apples. I almost lost my mind when I first saw this Standard and Poor's presentation because I felt that if we had been told the same thing that Standard and Poor's had been told, then 29-2 would have probably been a very different bill. And as we further explore, like the when the $21 million became available, when we knew it was going to become available, how the negotiations went, all that kind of stuff. You know, do you remember in New Orleans when water was rising and the levees were breaking? Do you remember what they used to try and plug the levees? Mr. Chairman? No, they didn't take Mardi Gras stuff and shove it in there. They had these bags, and they were full of sand.
Means sandbags.
Sandbags, yeah. I, I just want to really nail this down because I'm really tired of bouncing revenue numbers and, and the fact that it wasn't addressed in this bill, this bill we got in special session, this one too, just shocks me to no end. It's, it's like we're being expected to just, "Oh, you know, here's some money, it came in, now we want to be able to appropriate against that." Just forget about everything else that happened before. And, and that's no way to run any railroad.
Okay, let me just make it very clear again. There's a reiteration, and I will reiterate, the legislature is requesting the presence of Mr. Carlos Bernalio, and also, in, in the earlier request is for a copy of the memorandum of understanding. Continue, Speaker Ford.
Yeah, actually, you know, John wouldn't be bad too, because John was the one that did most of the talking.
There you go.
The, the confidence level is the 99 percentile and the 95 percentile.
So Carlos Bernalio and, and Mr. John.
It'd be nice. And I'm not trying to get in trouble here. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I just want, you know, the same statement to be evaluated against the same statement. I know it seems like we've been here a long time, guys, but you realize it's only July. You know, it's, it's only July since inauguration, so we haven't been here for 2,000 years. The administration, the 29th law and legislature just seems that way because there's been so many different things, so many different pieces of information, so many changes, such a fluid. You know, I mean, and so it creates the impression that we've been here since forever. So many changes in personnel, so many changes in faces, so many changes in staff. Let's, since we're going to hold a lot of that stuff in abeyance. Guys, are you telling me, well, let's assume for a minute that 454 is in fact what you're saying that base revenue estimate was, based on the Standard and Poor's presentation, because Lord knows you wouldn't want to lie to Standard and Poor's. Isn't that something you think should be changed in this bill? Or are you telling me that everything is precisely the same as you told us in 29-2?
May I?
No, answer that question yes or no. Is everything precisely the same as you told us in 29-2?
Well, I, I wasn't here in 2902, but I-
Okay, then, ho, 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 then don't answer.
But I can explain the 454.
Don't answer until the people who are here, who were here for 29-2. I don't want to hear an explanation of what someone else said. Let them say it for themselves. George? Is your view then that outside of adding the 21-something million dollars, is the administration's view once again that every single number in the entirety of the revenue estimates contained in 29-2 should remain the same? Even this $30 million that turned into nine?
Mr. Speaker, the only thing that we're trying to address with this bill is the authorization levels which needed to be adjusted.
That's understood, George, but, but aren't the authorization levels dependent upon, aren't the authorizations level dependent upon the level of revenues?
Well, yes.
And if the $21 million is to be added, isn't it equally important for us to know as we appropriate whether there is anything in those revenue estimates to be subtracted?
That's certainly yes. That's certainly right.
Well, it's not right. I mean, if we're going to do this, if we're going to do this intelligently and not blindly, and not wind up compounding mistakes, isn't it important that we know that? I mean, how can we do this and not know that? We're, we're making an assumption that the $21 million is purely additive. Unless I see the other numbers, how do I know it's additive? How do I know it's not making up for the fact that we didn't get all the amnesty we thought we would get? How do I know that? The only way that we can appropriate this $21 million bucks, it seems to me, is if we're somehow offsetting the problem we had in the collection of amnesty, unless you can demonstrate that there's been increases in revenue in other areas. Because if it's 9 million and it used to be 30, stop at 30, give you the revenue estimate, although I'm giving more ads in the amnesty, there's only $9 million left. You have a $21 million shortfall in that particular revenue category, don't you? Don't you? Am I adding wrong? In the revenue estimate, it said, in the revenue estimate 29-2, it said there would be $30 million in revenue collected as a result of the amnesty. Right? Then, we come to find that there is a $9 million collection as opposed to a $30 million collection. That would seem to me to indicate that there's a $21 million shortfall. So you have $21 million extra. Doesn't that just make it cabanas? Isn't that logical? Unless you have other sources of revenue. Do you? And what it all goes come to? You know, those are all estimated in 29-2 as well, so did you get more in fees than you thought you would? Did you get more in Dave Santos than you thought you would? Did you get more in basic revenue than you thought you would? We need a picture here, guys. I need to know how much higher than what you thought you were going to get, you're running right now. And I'm shocked that you didn't just come clean and tell us the whole picture. But-
Mr. Speaker, we didn't get all the money that we thought that we were going to get in the tax amnesty program, and then this money is the result of lengthy negotiations. So this has come in and this is allowing us to come back and revisit and get additional spending authorization so that we can do the things that we need.
You're missing the point. You appropriate against a revenue estimate. The revenue estimate was set in 29-2. The only thing you guys have admitted to me today, so far, are two things. One, that you got $21 million bucks from the feds. Two, that the amnesty is $21 million less than was. So in order to appropriate more, there has to be an overall picture of improved revenue health. Because right now, what I'm hearing is a wash. $21 million out, $21 million in. I don't have a problem giving you spending authority. Show it to me, is all I'm asking. Show me the whole picture. Because, guys, little birds are flying, you know, floating into my ear, all right? Let's be, let's be blunt. Little birds are chirping around my ear. Yes, George, they do chirp around everybody's ear, including myself and every member of the legislature. And they're telling me your revenue picture is better than just the $21 million that's coming in from Uncle Sam. Now, let me ask a generalized question. I'm not going to ask you to give me specifics yet. We'll go through that. Are the little birds chirping around my ears wrong? Or are they more or less right? That your picture is a little bit better than just $21 million over, based upon this federal source?
Mr. Speaker, I think based on the economic activity, you know, the, the economy as it stands today, the fee increases, the, yes?
Yes, it's better?
Yes, it is.
Can you document that, please?
Pardon me?
Can you document it so that we can adopt a new revenue figure?
You know, I'm certain, I'm certain that, that we can. But that is a general question, and a general answer, yes, the economy is better.
So you're getting more revenue? So you're getting more revenue?
We, we have, the, so the revenues are, are coming in.
We picked a number in 29-2, guys. This isn't, you know, this isn't rocket surgery, as they say, okay? We picked a number. Are we doing better than that number? That's my question.
And I'm saying, yes, we are.
Okay. So George says, yes, we are. So all I want to know is how much, yes, we are. How hard is it to get to how much, yes, we are?
You know, Senator, part of the equation is our collection on our pass due taxes. It shows that taxes has increased for prior year significantly in the last year or so. So the part of the revenue source is from prior year.
Whatever. I just want to see it. Okay, I just think that the legislature needs to know what it's doing so it doesn't appropriate wrongly in this circumstance because right now, you told me the amnesty is down 21. This is plus 21, so right now, looking at it, it's, it's even steven.
Mr. Speaker, as you said, I think every, we're required, actually, under the, to report every month, so, you know, the, the information, you know, would, would be here also. And let's say, I mean, we're not the only ones that have.
I know, hey, guys, but you're giving us a bill, you're asking us to amend the revenue section. I'm just saying that, you know, we've had evidence, frankly, guys. You know, 17 days goes by and a number changes by 21 million, by $20 million. I've seen bouncing revenues all year. Okay? I've seen, I've seen proclamations made by the administration all year that this is the way it is, no. This is the way it is, no. This is the way it is, no. I mean, if you, if you want to tell me that you sent a consistent message about revenues, fine, you can make that statement. I'd advise you not to because I think the facts will demonstrate that you haven't had a consistent message about revenue throughout this entire year. Okay? It's moved around quite a bit. And all I'm saying is it makes sense to me that before we start marching down the road, you know, later on today or whenever, of making appropriations, which we're going to want to do, and no one here wants to see, you know, some of us might think that there's some other things here that need to be addressed that are more priority than some of the things that are being addressed, but not that I don't like kaha, but, you know. But, but by the same token, we need to get some stability in the information we're getting, and I'm just, I'm mystified why you didn't take the opportunity to do that. But, you know, whatever, you didn't take the opportunity to do it, so can you give us the opportunity? Can you show us what the situation is? Can you tell us what the deal is? Can you give us a number? I don't mean right now. Obviously, we should break for lunch here and come back, but I think this is an important thing to know. And I do have some questions when we get back about the $21 million, so you better find out about whether or not you can share that MOU. Let me ask just a general question right now about that, if I could, before we break for lunch, and maybe you can tell me. Is it a top secret when you signed the MOU?
No.
What date did you sign the MOU?
I believe Art signed it on May 7th? Or May 11th, sorry.
May 11th. What day was that again, that the governor signed 29-2 into law? May 18th? When you signed the MOU on May 11th, did you keep it to yourself and keep it as a secret and you're going to spring it on Art? Or did Art, just, Art, did you just like keep it to yourself and not tell anybody or?
You know, Senator, IRS asked us not to publicize.
Oh, no, that's fine, but did you just keep it to yourself in the office there? You know, shh. Muangamashlangani si, si toni blouse.
I think we wanted to share this much weekend's money. No, it wasn't like that.
What was it like?
Most, most of our dealings with IRS are confidential. Anything dealing with taxes or procedures and so on.
Did you tell George? Did George know about it?
I don't know.
Did George know that on that date, you signed the MOU?
Yes. When that negotiations were happening, the fiscal team knew about-
Who's the fiscal team?
Which made up of a revantax, DOA, and-
I like people's names. Who's?
And revantax. It was-
Were you there?
Art Lagann.
Art Lagann, okay.
Carlos Bernalio.
Carlos Bernalio was there.
Lou Perez.
Lou Perez was there.
George Bomba.
George Bomba was there. Anybody else was there?
I can't recall, but that's the, the main, the main group.
When the governor signed 29-2 into law, was he aware that the MOU had been signed like a week earlier?
The only problem with that was the reconciliations had not occurred.
That's fine, I'm just asking. You know, you're anticipating questions I haven't asked. Asking if the governor was aware.
I think the MOU spelled out the terms of the, what, what was agreed upon, what had been negotiated, the actual amount that you, I mean, because we didn't know it was 21.7. There had to, there had to be reconciliations that, that had to occur.
Fine. I'm just asking if the governor knew.
You know, I mean, that's really, I mean, that's-
That's a yes or no question. Did the governor know?
That what, that the MOU was signed?
Yes. Okay, so, so, wait, wait, again. When we get the MOU, we'll, we'll see what the governor knew. Now, while you were nego, how long were you negotiating this, Art? How long were you negotiating this?
I think we did the, the, the reserves back in, in February, right?
No, the OPAM began.
Right around when we agreed with the, the garden reserves on that $14.9 million that was already included in last year's Section 30. was already included in last year's Section 30. We got into discussions of other amounts that were not reported over, which were the retirees. So, we started discussion on that. No amounts were...
Can you give me a date?
What's that?
Can you give me an approximate date?
February 2007.
You're talking about the decrease in Section 30, the 14 million dollar reservation because of overpayment, right?
The decrease in Section 30?
Is that the 14 you're talking about?
No, no. What, see, what happened back in, remember when we first came in into the administration? And they took 10 million dollars right of, out of the Section 30? I don't know if you remember that now. I was very concerned, because I don't think they would, they were recording everything, everything on base of what they were withholding to us. So, that discussion led into us looking into other things like reserves and other amounts that were not being paid over to the government or go on.
So, you mean approximate date when you started negotiating on this particular amount?
On this one?
Yeah.
I believe it was probably the first week of February. It wasn't February, I can't remember what...
Prior to the State of the Territory.
Yes, but it was not an amount or something determined?
I realize that, but that was, that was something that was already in the air prior to the great doom and gloom speech.
Right. It was an investigation that may or may not, could not, or may not happen. If they found out...
In February. When did you start to get the impression that something was going to happen?
When did you get the impression that something was going to happen? You know, I don't recall the exact, but it was probably sometime around mid-March or the April or around there.
Mid-March or April. About the time we started deliberation on Bill 74. So, by the time we started deliberation on Bill 74, although you weren't sure exactly what the amount would be, you already had a sense that this was going to come to some kind of positive conclusion and that we'd have more money as a result. And then we know for a fact that the MOU was signed before Bill 29-2 was signed into law. How come we're only hearing about this now, that the check has hit the bank? Why did you...
Why did they tell us not to do the job?
No, but it's not, it's not that you didn't tell, it's not that you guys are not telling us. I don't have a problem with that. You know, Art, I don't want to know tax information, you're right. But I also know that you're telling other people, who are making decisions, policy decisions, and they do enjoy that information that we don't have. So, I'm not questioning you guys at all, really, about your decision-making. I mean, more power to you, you went and got the money, you know, way to go. I'm becoming curious about how decisions are made by those who are empowered with that information about millions of dollars coming, and yet it seems to have no bearing whatsoever on policy decisions that are made. And, you know, I assume we're going to recess at some point here, so, I'm just going to make this point, and then maybe we can go, and you guys can get the information we need to continue this afternoon. But the decisions that are being made resulted, and this can't be lost, in people sticking their hands in their pockets and paying more. These decisions resulted in months of government employees panic-stricken because they thought their incomes are going to be reduced. How long ago was the last time we saw a public announcement from the front office about furloughs? Anybody in the front office care to answer that one? When's the last time we got a press release about furloughs?
Friday.
Friday. Now, is it a stretch of the imagination to assume that at the moment, at the very moment whoever wrote that press release released it? And at the very moment that Sean or whoever spoke about it to everyone except KOM, you guys were in absolute full knowledge that you had the money in the bank? Am I wrong?
You wouldn't have, we wouldn't have said that if we had felt confident that we had it anyway.
No, I'm not talking about that, Carr. I'm talking about the last time that the front office came out with a scare everybody with a furlough story.
This is not something that, that any administration thinks is a wonderful tactic. Let's go out there and scare everybody with something.
Carr, Carr, I don't want to get into this with you, Carr. I just want to know what, who knew what when? And I know that there were press releases issued that talked about the inevitability of furloughs at the very same time that people were fully aware that this money was coming. That's a fact. We will demonstrate later on how much of a fact that was, but, I mean, I think the evidence is piling up here. Okay? So, you know, and again, I'm not saying we're not going to help you all out, and we sure as heck want to make sure that you don't unnecessarily extract any pain here. But you guys had a golden opportunity in this bill to come clean on a lot of stuff, and you didn't choose to take it. And so, that's why the question is going to be asked. Okay?
Thank you, Senator Forbes. Also, I have in line for questions and comments Senator Norio than Senator Spishul, but we will take, and Senator Guthers, but we'll take a luncheon break, and we'll be back at 2:00. With that, three cents, adjourn till 2:00. Speaker, Senator Mark Forbes.
Thank you very much. Before we broke for lunch, we did ask for certain individuals who were not present this morning to, to join us during this committee of the whole. I note that none of those people are here, and in fact, we've lost one person who was here this morning. Anybody care to explain why no one's here who we asked for, and how we've come to lose one?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, Senator Bamba, when he first came here, he wasn't feeling well, and this is something that he shared with the chairman, so we knew that we were just going to have him for just a short period of time, that he would start us off. And Joey and Carlos from, are on leave, they're on vacation, and they haven't been answering our call, which is the way people are when they're on vacation. This is something that they didn't anticipate, that anybody would be called down here and asked, so they are on their leave, taking care of their personal matters, their vacation and family issues. John Delarosa is, has, was involved with all of you over a very lengthy period of time, and he felt very passionately and involved in the process. And what happened is that he feels very strongly about that course of events that had transpired regarding the choices that were made in 29-02 and continuing down that. And now, he feels that this is not the best place for him to be at this time, feeling as strongly that he does, that he preferred if we had taken another choice.
I have no idea what you just said on the last response with respect to John Delarosa. Could you put that in simpler English? He is a member of the governor's staff, is he not?
He's a very important member of the governor's staff.
Nonetheless, he is a member of the governor's staff, I'm not going to assign any relative importance or lack thereof. He is a member of the governor's staff who was the primary spokesman for the administration during the deliberations on 29-2. Was he not?
He was a key member of the staff that was down here.
He was, for the most part, the only person sitting there, as I recall, through most of 29-2.
Well, we would say that we had our fiscal policy team, we had the Department of Administration, we had...
I would say that over the course of eight weeks, you know, we can run the tape if you want, and I hope to God you guys remember you did stick your hand up in the air. I would say, based upon my recollection, which I think is fairly reasonable, that for the majority of the time that we were in at 29-2, there were many days when John was the only person representing the administration. I don't remember Art, I love Art, Art is my bestest buddy, but I remember Art being here every single day, once we got past the revenue tax stuff, there wasn't any reason for him to be here. The former director of BBMR was very hit and miss. I think he actually spent only a combination of two or three days out of the entire period here. So, I would say that the most accurate representation is he was the primary spokesperson for the administration during the deliberations on 29-2. And the reason I'm asking this question is I'm curious, really curious, to know why John gets to make this call.
He's a very important part of our team.
And consequently, he gets to decide whether or not he wishes to testify on things?
We're hoping that he might have a change of opinion, but...
Okay. Can we be, can we be sure about this? Let's, maybe we'll clarify that. Change of opinion with respect to what? Are you telling me that John does not support the policy that is contained in this bill that is presented to us today?
I would say that John Delarosa was passionately committed to the work product that he worked on with you for the past nine and a half weeks. And so...
I don't understand the answer. Does that mean that John supports or does not support the contents of 1- whatever the heck this is? What is it? 1-1?
I would say, I would say that he would probably prefer that we went a different course, which would be to continue along the course.
And so, governor's office staff, based on their personal opinions and their personal feelings about particular pieces of legislation, get to decide whether they wish to participate or not participate in the process? That's how it works down there?
I would say that he's earned the stripes for the fact that he was down here for nine and a half weeks.
Tell you what, I worked eight years at a governor's office myself, eight years, and there were decisions, you know, Art was not the director of revenue tax, but he was there, and I don't remember being, having the, having the luxury to be able to make those calls in all the eight years I was there, but that's okay. Mr. Chair, you know, obviously, these individuals will not be here. It's very hard to ask Ms. Duñez to respond.
I've just gotten word from my chief of staff that Mr. John Delarosa just called, and he's on his way.
Okay. That's fine. It's very hard to ask Ms. Duñez some of the questions that are, you know, retroactive, because she won part of the team. So, to have her explain things at that period of time, it's very difficult. Just to kind of finish up, and then I'll relinquish the mic and let other people ask questions. We did establish clearly that there's been one major change in the revenue estimates, at least, that everyone acknowledges, between 29-2 and current events, and that is the tax amnesty number. That's a very important change, because as, based on the best estimate by the Department of Revenue Taxation, it is a 21 million dollar change downward between the number adopted in 29-2 and what we currently believe is the actual result of the amnesty. I will note that in the presentation that was made to Standard and Poor's, 17 days after public law 29-2 was signed into law, and again, this is very confusing, folks, but, you know, 29-2 is signed into law. In the revenue estimate section of 29-2, it estimates 30 million dollars for amnesty, for tax amnesty. 17 days later, a presentation is made to Standard and Poor's, and that number changes to 6 million. I understand that was based on some actual stuff that you guys got in the ensuing 17 days. But again, it's a monumental variance. It's a monumental variance. It's not a difference of 1 million, 2 million, 3 million. And I'm just wondering if when 29-2 was signed into law, there might not have already been some clue that 30 million was not going to be hit? Or did you guys just figure it out, like, in the period of the 17 days between the signing into law of 29-2 and the presentation to Standard and Poor's? And I remind you, that's two weeks and three days. It's not months. It's two weeks and three days. Or, did you already have a clue when the governor signed into law that you weren't going to hit 30, Art?
When we estimated the 30 million dollar estimate, I believe 5 million was for real property and 25 million was for the other taxes.
Right.
At that time, we, it was John Camacho and I, we kind of based our estimates on what the other amnesty that was in 1999...
Certainly. Well, that would have been true at the beginning of the discussion on Bill 74. But as the weeks progressed in the discussion on Bill 74, week after week after week after week, because you, you did the amnesty on your own, you didn't need our, our, you know, you didn't need our buy or leave to do the amnesty, so you went ahead and did the amnesty on your own. The amnesty was already underway while we were discussing Bill 74, yes?
That's correct.
So, it was already happening. We deliberated 29-2 for weeks on end. And then the governor sat on 29-2 for the full 10 days, not counting Sundays and days of celebration, to sign it into law. So, it was about 10 weeks or so, maybe 10 and a half weeks, between the time you said that you were shooting for the 30 million dollars and the time that the Honorable Felix P. Camacho signed his name to that thing. And 17 days later, you told another, not you personally, okay, I'm using the you, the administration you. 17 days later, the administration says, no, we're only going to collect 6. Did you just discover that, guys, between the time the governor signed into law and 17 days later? Or does you already have a hint that that might be the case prior to the governor's signature of 29-2 into law?
how much we're going to collect from the tax amnesty.
I know that. I'm not talking about what you guys, I accept that when we first started talking about Bill 74. I'm moving us forward in time. Okay? You guys presented 74, you made your best guess, I'm not faulting you for doing that. You made your best guess way back when Bill 74 was first drafted by the administration, okay? Which I believe was sometime in March? What I'm saying is, at the end of the process, after the nine weeks of deliberation, after the more than 10 days that the governor deliberated on this to sign it into law, I'm saying that the governor signs it into law, and 17 days later, someone makes an entirely different presentation. I have no idea who wrote it. I don't know who made the policy decisions on that thing. I don't know who drafted it. I don't know who put it in the, you know, the whatever, what was that, my PowerPoint? I don't know who put that stuff in there. And I'm not faulting you guys. I'm just saying, this is a case of, I want to know who knew what when. All right? Did you just determine, some, you made a change between the signing of the bill, I'm not saying you, okay? I'm not saying you personally. I'm saying that a change was made between the signing of the bill into law and 17 days later when Standard and Poor's got a presentation. So, I want to know if the knowledge of the necessity for that change only occurred in that 17-day period, or was there already information based upon the actual results in that 10, almost 11-week period that would cause people to question whether or not 30 million dollars could be collected? I want to know when people knew.
I can't recall when that thing happened, the 6 million dollar. I think that 6 million dollar amount came right before the presentation to, to Standard and Poor's.
Okay. So, are you telling me that before you wrote that presentation to Standard and Poor's, a few days before Standard and Poor's showed up, right up into that day, you really thought it was going to be 30 million, then all of a sudden overnight, you thought it was 6?
It's based on estimates.
But it's a process. I mean, you're looking at it, you must be thinking, wow, you know, gee, are we going to hit 30? I don't know. Oh, man, we have to make this presentation to Standard and Poor's. What should we tell them? Should we tell them it's going to make 30? I mean, you could have made an estimate of 30 then, too. But you didn't. You made an estimate of 6. So, it must have been based on some empirical data, some collection, something that told you guys that it wasn't going to be 30. And I'm just wondering, again, when did that... And I'm just wondering again, when did that awareness dawn? Did it dawn before the governor signed it into law? That's what I want to know. Did anyone advise the governor that it might not be $30 prior to the signature of this bill into law? That's what I want to know. I mean, if you don't know, say you don't know, but that's the question I'm asking.
From what I can recollect, sir, it was done right prior to the presentation of the Standard and Poor's. It wasn't done before May 18.
All I want to know is, so you're telling me that in May 18, when this bill was signed into law, everybody still thought it was going to pull in $30 million?
We were going to try to get $30 million.
No, 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 no. Hopeful, you know, I hope I will regrow hair. Okay? I hope a lot of things, you know? But if I were to make a public law based upon the contingency of my regrowing hair, that wouldn't work. And I'm not trying to trap you. I just want to know when people knew what they knew, because these numbers are bouncing all over creation, and it turns out that it appears that six might have been a little low, that it might have been nine, maybe a little bit more than nine. $30 was definitely way too high. So apparently, if I understand your answer correctly, if I do understand your answer correctly, up until the day the governor signed Bill 29, I mean, sorry, up until the day he signed Bill 74 into law and it became 29-2, he and the fiscal team and his closest advisors were still operating under the impression that the amnesty was going to acquire $30 million in additional revenue for the current fiscal year. Is that what you're saying?
What date was that against, when?
May 18.
Right, that was the date.
On May 18, on the calendar date, May 18, the year of our Lord 2007, was the prevailing opinion and the opinion that drove the signature of that bill into law partially based on a belief that the amnesty would acquire $30 million in additional revenue for fiscal year 2007? Or conversely, was it already a topic of discussion that it was not going to make the $30 million mark?
On May 18, the amnesty was probably in effect, probably only two and a half weeks. It started on April 26. So that three weeks was not enough to determine if we were going to get $30 million?
So, then answer my, I'm sorry, Art, I just want you to answer my question clearly and cleanly. So you're telling me that on May 18, when it was signed into law, everyone on that side of the aisle, down there, yadda loop, thought that $30 million was going to come in?
Yes, that was our presentation.
And then sometime in the next seventeen days, that realization went from $30 million to, oh my God, it's only going to be six? And I know you don't write these things, Art, so I really feel bad that I'm the one who's asking you this, because I know you don't, I know you don't put the presentations together. That's not what you do. I'm sure someone down there does, but somebody had a realization somewhere in the course of seventeen days that $30 million was six. That's what you guys are telling me?
That number, sir, I think when they started to do the SMP numbers, Carlos Burdallio was a part of that, and he did, he called me, like, a couple of days before the Standard and Poor's, the Standard and Poor's report was due. It was probably like, maybe three or four, five days before that. And he asked me, Art, does the numbers look right? And I said, it's almost June 26, I think, that's what happened. I can't recall.
I thought you said the Standard and Poor's thing happened in early June.
No, no, I'm talking about the end of the amnesty. And when we were reaching around June, we're looking at numbers, and it kind of looks doubtful that we would reach a $30 million.
Art, that's only 12 days difference. I mean, I'm sorry if it sounds to me like I'm being incredulous, but I'm incredulous. I mean, you're telling me for sure there was a rock-solid commitment to $30 million, and then in less than two weeks, it's like, ah! We're only going to get six! And I, you know, I'm not saying that didn't happen, but boy, if that's what happened, it's kind of like, whoa. It's all right. We'll let that go. But the one thing we know for sure is that that's a number that should change, right? We don't want 2007 to be remembered as the year that we adopted $30 million in amnesty that didn't happen, so just on the amnesty question alone, are we asking too much to ask you guys to give us a new revenue number for that one category of amnesty? So that we're not adopting a totally fallacious, absurd number? Because remember, it all adds up at the end of the day to the revenue estimate. And the revenue estimate is what we're basing the appropriation on. And right now, I got to warn you, right now, this is a wash. $21 million off on the amnesty program balances beautifully with $21 million coming from Uncle Sam. So you're going to ask us to appropriate what? Huh? From what? I mean, the $21 million here would have to cover the $21 million that we lost in amnesty, unless there is additional revenue that we're not seeing here. You understand my point? And you know why I'm being so pedantic? I'm sorry. I apologize for being pedantic. But I don't want to go through 29-2 again. I don't want to pull what remaining few hairs I have out of my head dealing with a bill that comes to us that is purported to be balanced that isn't. Or all the other host of problems that were associated with 29-2. I don't want to get, I want to get, you know, to the best of my feeble ability, and I'll grant you, I'm as feeble as they come on many things, but I just want everything on the table on day one. On day one, I want everything on the table. And everything on the table, to me, means, among other things, if this is supposed to work, then there must be some other revenue here we're not seeing. Got to be. That's just simple, logical, first grade, you know? Because right now, we're just caballos with the $21 million 21 million, 21 million in Philadelphia. So I urge you to, with whatever time you have this afternoon or this evening, to strongly consider making a new revenue presentation on 2007 revenues that makes this whole thing work. You can't just pull $21 million in isolation out of the sky and say, appropriate this. You know, you can't just pull $21 million. That's like, you know, it'd be like, it'd be like Art coming here and saying, or you guys having Art come down here and say, can you just appropriate the GRT? It just doesn't make sense. It's illogical. You know, it's just not wise. The other thing, too, that we established, I think, this morning, that we need to just reestablish before I relinquish this mic again, is, by the way, are you going to contact IRS in Philadelphia and see if you can get permission to actually have us see this memorandum of understanding? Okay. What do you think? You think they'll say yes? You think they'll say yes? Do you think they'll say yes? I think so, too. All right, so we'll get to see the MOU, whatever Uncle Sam says we can. But we did establish our dates, and I just want to run through those dates one more time. Art, you said that you actively started looking for this additional money, dealing with the retirees, et cetera, et cetera, around February.
That's correct.
Right. And this would be like immediately before the governor gave his State of the Territory address and made his pronouncement that, that I believe, let me see if I remember this correctly, because now it's stretching my feeble memory cells, but I'll try. During the course of the State of the Territory, he made a couple of pronouncements, one of which was that, you know, the Governor Guam was in dire straits and we were about to collapse. Second was that he had a fiscal recovery plan that we would be receiving in a matter of days, as I recall. Isn't that what it said in the State of the Territory? Any of you guys remember it? I think it said in a matter of days, yeah. And then if I remember correctly as well, if drastic things didn't happen by April 1st, seems so long ago now, there was going to be, they're going to have to be massive layoffs in the Governor of Guam on April 1st. That was a pronouncement that was made in February. Then, Art, you said, or I can't remember, it was Mr. Rios, I think, Joe, you're the one who said it, right, Joe? Not Art. You said that you got your first indications that you were going to be successful in this sometime in March or April. Right? That's what you said, in March or April? So you guys already knew in March or April that it was likely, even if you didn't know the exact number, that you were going to get some bucks out of this? I'm trying to remember now, and I'm having a very difficult time. If anybody can help me on our side of the aisle. Trying to remember when 74 was transmitted. It was in March, but when in March? That sounds about right. Yeah, I remember I had to stay outside and like at, until 7:00 or 8:00 PM to get it, or something like that. That was an emergency situation. I was hanging around outside. So let's say late March is when Bill 74 was transmitted, which was about the time that you guys, maybe a couple of weeks later. But it's within the same ballpark of when you realize you're going to have some success with this acquisition of additional funds, even if you didn't know exactly how much. And then we deliberated the bill for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, during which no one from the administration, at least in my recollection, made any presentation that we might have this additional source of revenue coming in during the course of the fiscal year, even though there had already been some knowledge of it. Then you said, if I recall correctly, that the MOU was signed on the 11th of May?
What happened is, I signed it on the 2nd, but it wasn't ratified by them till the 11th. They signed off on it on the 11th.
Okay, they signed it off on the 11th, but you signed off it on May 2nd. Now, I'm sure before you signed off on it, you had a conversation with Downtown about it, right? Or did you just do it completely by yourself?
When they did the first, on the reserves back in February, I kind of like told them I needed to get my clearance with the front office before I signed off on it.
Oh, okay.
So what happened was it took a while for them, for us to agree and go ahead and do it, so. But this time around...
Who's us agree?
You know, the finance group. The finance group, the governor, I had to get their input as to...
You had to get their input on whether or not to go acquire the money?
No, to sign off on the amount. On the dollar figure. It's a settlement amount.
So on May 2nd, you already knew what the number was?
Pardon me? No, I'm talking about the reserves. The reserve, we collected $14.9 million last year when we got the advanced, advanced section 30.
Keep that in your pocket, because I'm going to ask you one question about that reserve. But when you signed the MOU in May, what was that, the 2nd you said?
Right.
Yeah, you will. I'm going to relinquish a second. 2nd, is that when you did it?
I signed it on the 2nd.
So I'm just trying to, again, reestablish, they knew, right?
It's a 2nd MOU. And he signed it, I believe, on the 2nd, the 2nd. And we sent it back there and IRS signed it.
Okay, on the Guam end, people knew about it on May 2nd.
Pardon me?
On the Guam end, people knew about this May 2nd. That's my point, that you had signed the MOU.
Right.
Okay. We knew front office. We established as well that the bill was not signed into law 29-2 until May 18, which then would have been 16 days after you signed the MOU. I just want to note for the record, and that's all I want to do, there was a heck of a lot of knowledge about the possibility of this money coming while we were still in a situation where it could have affected 29-2. A, that's a fact. I mean, to me, that's just obvious. Two, there was no major thrust on the part of the administration to make us all aware that this was happening. It could have affected things. And in the future, I hope that this doesn't happen. Final question, that $14 million, is that a $14 million gain or a $14 million loss, we have to ask again?
It's a gain. It was reserves withholding that was not paid over to Guam.
Can I ask a question about that? Did you count that as revenue, or did you decide it was just an accounts receivable?
It was, we asked for it in September, the prior year. And we got it as an advance, and we signed off on the memorandum of understanding.
So you counted it as revenue for the prior fiscal year?
Right.
Okay, that's why I just want to make sure it was actually counted as revenue, just to make sure we were consistent, since we seem to be constantly counting these things as revenue when they come in. Okay, I'll relinquish for then, although I really do wish, and I really want to go on the record, is saying, it's really hard to discuss this stuff without Carlos and those guys here. Because it's sort of like, you know, to ask Bertha questions is to put ourselves in a situation, I think, where, you know, too much of it is going to be outside of the direct experience of Ms. Duñez, who is nonetheless very competent in what she does, but she was not the BBR director at the time. So it's kind of hard to do that.
Okay, thank you, Speaker. Senator Tenorio, then Respecho, then Pangolino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask, if I can, about the federal sources. I know Bertha was with us in the revenue projection public hearings we've been having on the FY08 budget. So if Ms. Duñez, there was a document produced called the General Fund Revenue Data, Bureau of Budget Management Research Revenue Tracking Source DOA Statement of Revenue and Expenditures. And on page 3 of 5 of that document, if you have it, on page 3 at the bottom, there's federal and tracks from '99 to 2008. And in the second to the last line, which is 2007, it looks at the total figure in column O at $51,909,348. We talked about that in the revenue projection portion of the public hearings on Bill 143. And I just wanted to get some clarity, because we're looking at this bill in front of us. It amends the figure from $59,329,029, which is a variance of eight, literally almost $8 million. What are the actual anticipated revenues from the federal sources? Is it $51,909 or $59,329?
Just for clarity, because the numbers that were provided by the administration passed in '59-02 was at $59 million. But on the hearings last week, you made representations to us that we can anticipate a downward adjustment of $51.9. So again, very good question.
That's the question I'm asking the gentle lady.
Okay, the sub, there's two parts, two parts to this scenario on federal sources. The presentation that I made during the revenue hearing about a week ago, which is the spreadsheet you're referring to, reflects for 2007, $51,909,348. That particular change is the tracking. The $59 million that is showing in public law 29,149 or 150, the revenue chapter of the public law indicates $59 million. So the amendment needs to take the form of a departure from what was adopted as opposed to what it is tracking. The tracking, which was presented last week, is the $51, which means that there is a decline in the actuals collected through April, which were the actuals that was presented to the committee a week ago. So that's the difference between the two numbers.
So then which figure is the administration, then? Are they accepting the $59, or are they, do they want to revise that figure downward to $51?
And just because I'm the chairman, I was there, you know, it was a statements by, again, by the administration that the $59 figure was, that number was now, again, based on your representations, was going to be at $51 million. I think the question Senator is alluding again is, obviously, we have this new amount, and there seems to be a difference in what was originally ratified.
Of course. There will always be a difference between what is adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year and tracking. Tracking is the exercise of determining month-to-month based on actuals. What are the projections out based on what we're experiencing so far? So in every category, not just federal sources, you will find that they do not mirror the Budget Act, the 29-02.
Yeah, we understand the budget is anticipated money to receive based on certain empirical data that we've collected in previous periods of time over months and years, in some cases, weeks. And in these weeks and months and years leading up, we're now looking at a significant departure from $59 to $51. It's actually closer to $52. So you've got a $7.4 million variance. You had mentioned something in that revenue public hearing about a $6 million additional money that you're looking at collecting as well. about a six million dollar additional money that you're looking at collecting as well, there was a tie to federal funds?
Senator, at that public hearing, at that hearing that I offered this spreadsheet, it was testimony on fiscal year two thousand eight. You're discussing two thousand seven in the context of two thousand eight, so we need to separate the two so we're clear.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about FY zero seven and the new projections that you have.
So, if you're talking about zero seven, the six million that I offered at the time that was adjusted to federal sources is not a part of the two thousand seven.
Okay, all right, I understand. So, then, Mr. Chairman, that's a notable figure. And then, John, if I could real quick to ask you a question. We were involved in discussions-
If we could call Sergeant at Arms?
Thank you.
Microphone, Bertha.
John, you were involved, as the Speaker had mentioned intimately, with most of the proceedings down here in the revised two thousand seven budget. And in that process, do you remember there was a long period of time, you know, both on and off record, on and off microphone, we talked about the general fund anticipated revenue? And there was a change from the four fifty-four, which was anticipated for the general fund, down to four thirty-three, four-
Four thirty-four.
Four thirty-four. Now, you do recall representing that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Art, is that true as well for yourself? That the revenue projections were off from four fifty-four to four thirty-four, thereabouts? During the last-
That was the discussion when we came here.
Do you remember supporting those figures? Those are accurate?
It was the amount that came over, and that was the, what budget, the budget office, who was responsible for that, would come up with that number, not revenue tax.
But both of you were pivotal figures in the conversation that dealt with four thirty-four.
And I think what we did back then, or Carlos did, was I don't know if you remember it, the prior year, when we had a revenue forecast of four thirty-five, right, and we were tracking that until probably February. And then March, April, May, June, July, it just dropped. So, I think what Carlos's mindset at that time was, what if this same thing happened again? So, he was very conservative with his numbers when he projected those things, and it didn't happen, I guess, that way, because the numbers were a lot better estimates, March, April, May, and June passed.
We discussed Bill seventy-four, now twenty-nine oh two, at length, or ninety and a half weeks, or thereabouts. During that process, again, on and off record, on and off microphone, we were asking about, you know, how realistic is it? And how, is there anything to lead us to believe that we're closer to this? Because we're really looking at projections, we're looking at, not projections, really tracking, because, you know, as Bertha, you know, properly put it, it's actual figures that are coming in, and you look at where you're going based on peaks and valleys over history. Some months, you get a significant amount of money, section thirty being example, income tax payments in April, there are so many different variations, but you soften those, and you basically spread it over the period of time. And so, the reason I'm asking these questions is, when we passed the Bill seventy-four, the administration was secure with his position, and stop me where I'm wrong, that four thirty-four was the actual revenue estimate that you expected to receive based on tracking. Is that correct?
That's correct, Senator.
All right. Now, were any of you at the Standard and Poor's presentation that occurred?
Yes, we all were.
You were all there? When that occurred, what date was it? June fifth. On June fifth, shortly after we passed and the budget law was changed, what was the revenue estimate in the general fund presented to Standard and Poor's at the time?
Four fifty-four.
What was the timeframe, when did we pass Bill seventy-four?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time, just because of microphone?
Four hundred and fifty-four million dollars was the estimate provided to Standard and Poor's. And Senator, that was about a little less than three, about three weeks after twenty-nine oh two was signed into law.
What happened in three weeks to go from four thirty-four to four fifty-four?
If I could, I was not here earlier, I apologize. The four thirty-four that I came down and represented to this body was what was provided to me by the Bureau at the time. And throughout the process, while we had been discussing both on the microphone, off the microphone, on the record, off the record, what we were tracking, the Bureau stayed on its four thirty-four projection. It didn't change through the process. Now, the revision upward is based on better-than-anticipated collections, as I was told for the months of, I believe it's March, April, March and April. Right?
So, there was a change then that drove the figure back up to four fifty-four?
Sure, I can only, you know- Throughout that process, when I was interacting with the Bureau, that, I kept asking them if that number was adjusted, they said no. They still projected a tracking of four thirty-four.
Yeah, now, I just want to see what the basis was for the change in three weeks, because we're really trying to get to, you know, again, we really tried to say, are you sure this is what the variation is? Because that's a twenty million dollar shortfall. And that's why many of the decisions we made was because we had no choice. You know, we're trying to find ways to keep this government operating, providing services, and that's why we used the figures that we did, which is a four hundred and thirty-four million dollar figure. And we said, are you sure you're not going to be closer to four fifty-four? Four forty-something, is it, where are you really at? And so, when we made a decision to do certain things in the FY zero seven budget, that's why I ask, what happened in the three weeks after we passed the bill that you went back to the four fifty-four? And if anybody can give me an answer to that, I'll be very happy. Please, Bertha?
Senator, the the presentation that was made to Standard and Poor's took the amount of four hundred and fifty-four point eight million. I believe that when twenty-nine oh two was being debated or deliberated, the clarification was not made, that the baseline tracking of forty, four thirty-two did not include the anomaly of additional child tax credit that was taken out, and certain unusual collections in income tax that Carlos, that Art offered, as he came up with an amount between him and John of unusual behavior in corporate and individual collections that was taken out of the tracking exercise, and therefore, that's the reason that four thirty-two was arrived at. And it was supposed to, Carlos added that in afterwards, after the four thirty-two was declared, which Mr. Speaker is correct. And that therein was how they arrived at four fifty-four. And it says so even on the spreadsheet that I passed out last week at the revenue hearing. We did enumerate fourteen million of income tax anomalies and eight million of additional child tax credit, which is what brought it to four fifty-four by the time we made the presentation to a Standard and Poor's.
When do those tax credits come into play?
They are received, I believe, at least twice a year, isn't it?
It's quarterly.
So, when did they come into play? Did they take place after we passed the budget?
It's done quarterly, I don't know what date it comes in. But every end of the quarter, we do certify to IRS what we paid out in refunds and additional child tax credit, and they reimbursed us for that amount.
So, the additional child tax credit was the primary change in why we went from four thirty-four to four fifty-four? Okay, well, back to BBMR then. So, let's lay this out. The tax credit changed the projections? And what else? No, because BBMR is the one who produced it, right?
You know, back then, maybe Joe can speak, to some of the transactions that happened in March and April that year, there were some properties that were sold. So, somebody, like if you sell to a foreign corporation, right, there's that ten percent amount that you're supposed to withhold on that amount. So, that was put into our account.
But here's the thing, okay? We know, or at least I do from the years, and not that many years, but a few years I've been in the legislature, that you soften things, and you even talked about this when we were in the budget. You said, you know, you soften up the peaks, and you reduce the valleys, and you ultimately come out to something a little bit more straight-line projections, and and these variations are usually just that, and you talk about anomalies. There are adjustments that occur which are not anticipated, there are things that, there are spikes in the budget, and things that change the overall total, but ultimately, they're softened. And that's some of the things we talked about, too. So, the projections for the entire fiscal year, I don't know how you can use a child tax credit as a basis for determining, you know, based on the projected revenues and the actual collections that we receive in the government on a budgetary basis, how those anomalies ultimately would bring you back up to four fifty-four from four thirty-four in a matter of three weeks?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. I heard the Director entering our seat, Art Loggins, that we get reimbursed for the child tax credit, the additional child tax credit. The additional child tax credit.
What do you mean by that?
Okay, you have the regular child tax credit. Now, if you don't use up your whole child tax credit that you claim on your tax return, there's an additional amount that you could file with from your tax. That amount is reimbursed by IRS, they're willing to pay us over the additional child tax.
Just, you know, I'm sort of, I'm sorry, Senator Tenorio, I just wanted clarification. So, wouldn't it be, you know, the child tax credit that was reimbursed to the government of Guam should be part of the, you know, the federal revenues that we're supposed to be receiving?
It's not paid out of section thirty. It's a reimbursement of a credit, it's not a withholding.
Exactly, but, you know, we're taking it out from the general fund, right? But we're being reimbursed, how much is that reimbursement? Senator Tenorio, I'm sorry, I just wanted clarification on that.
That amount varies depending on how much we refund per the quarter. But sometimes it's a million, sometimes it's one point five, depending on the amount, right?
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm not done.
Continue, Senator Tenorio.
Yeah, so, these tax credits that we're getting reimbursed from the federal government, how much were we talking about, again?
It depends on the quarter and how much we refunded for that.
Give me a ballpark figure.
It's about between one and one point five million dollars.
Per quarter?
Per quarter.
One to one point five. That hardly makes a difference on twenty million dollars, and if you're using a quarterly basis, you might get six million dollars over the course of the year, that's not going to bring you up twenty million. That's definitely not going to change your projections to four fifty-four. What were the other variables, please, Bertha?
Senator, the base tracking is four thirty-two, and then the additional child tax credit is eight million, and then fourteen point four million to what Art has just explained with regard to that anomaly in income tax. And that brings it to the four fifty-four point eight. And I believe what the confusion was might have been that the four thirty-two was presented as a tracking which is accurate, but they failed to note the adjustments for the anomalies that took place that needed to be adjusted back into the collection, the actual collections.
Yeah. All right, you know, I know there are-
I would, Senator, if I could just add, that if we included those anomalies, factored it into the exercise of the tracking experience, the projection would have been higher. That's why we don't want to put it there, because we don't want to present an artificial number.
Let me ask you this question, then. If, let's say, you know, all of these things happen, we have additional monies coming in, we got, you know, we're back at four fifty-four, literally, three weeks after we passed the budget. Did the governor, I mean, or did anyone say, okay, legislature, guess what? We're not that far off after all. We're much closer than we thought. And this is the facts, these are the numbers that are coming in to show it. So, we're not going to have to do this, or we're not going to have to do that. We can revisit the budget again.
Senator, at the time that the tracking, that that was discovered, that that was not a component that was considered in what was adopted in twenty-nine oh two, at the same time that that was happening, the amnesty wasn't looking good either. So, coincidentally, for the budget, it just happened to be a wash between the two.
So, I want to ask you now, is, are we now, and just we as a government, all right, but is the administration then prepared to say that the original figures that we had discussed in twenty-nine oh two, which is Bill seventy-four at the time, which at that time went from four fifty-four to four thirty-four, the administration supports the original revenue projections of four fifty-four? Because that's what you represented to Standard and Poor's, that you're actually going to make four fifty-four, and you're going to make the six million, which ultimately came out to nine plus change, plus the fees. So, are we going to stand by the original four hundred and fifty-four projections in isolation of the additional fees?
Well, you know, Senator, I think that in light of what in light of what has transpired, I think that it's actually, it actually makes a lot of sense for us to present an adjusted revenue projection.
So, let me just, one more time-
Which I would just say, at this point, I'm comfortable to say that between what was left out and the amnesty, that the amnesty net, which is twenty-one, it's a wash. That it's a wash, and then the twenty-one would suffice for the balance of the fiscal year for appropriations. That would be what will be presented, I, yes. No, 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 I'm just saying that that's, I can say now that because of that, just looking at, just looking at the amnesty, we're going to give actuals through May, tracking through May, to include the ACTC and the anomalies that were taken out of the initial tracking, which was the, and the fees, and everything will be adjusted based on- Yes, I understand.
Perfect coincidence, that's the concern I have. Continue, Senator Tenorio. A lot of perfect coincidences.
Tell me now, Bert, what are we really going to make in the general fund this year based on everything you know right now?
I believe that we will achieve the normal, the for, the-
I'm looking for a dollar figure.
Okay, yeah, four ninety.
We're going to generate four hundred and ninety based right now.
Including, including the section thirty.
Understood.
Including the adjustment that we just-
So, let's assume that everything stays in place as it is. You have everything that, all the numbers that you're looking at, you're going to generate four hundred and ninety million dollars right now?
No, just-
That's what you just said.
No, just looking at four seventy for the normal, including the revenue enhancements that were adopted in twenty-nine oh two, and this twenty-one million. were adopted in 2902, and this 21 million, 490.
So, when we, when we first gave it, we talked about the 21 million dollar shortfall in the, in the tax amnesty. And, and we know that 21 million dollars we received from the federal windfall is 21 million. The additional money that you're receiving as a result of policy changes, fees, and the actual revenue tracking is going to put you at 490 million dollars, correct? So the revenue that we adopted in 2902, in other categories, needs to be adjusted upwards to reflect their true figures. Is that correct? Because we went from four, just real quick, we went from 430, 454 to 434. What is that figure? Is it supposed to be 454? Based on the standards and porous presentation?
It sure appears coincidentally, one, no changes.
I just want to know, what you, what you gave to standard and porous was correct?
Yes, it was correct.
All right. And we've, we've added additional money to the conference.
At the time, at the time, it was correct, that was a month ago.
Right.
We now have the May actuals, and we did, I, I did the tracking exercise just last week, and that 454 will actually change to 458s.
All right.
As far as regu-, regular tracking.
Yes, of course, understood.
And then, we add in the 8 and the 14 million, and that would bring us to around 470 and 21 for this adjustment in federal sources.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, clearly we're going to have to go into some, we're going to have to break this thing out in Section 2, to go beyond the federal sources. Because federal sources may be an accurate representation, but the, clearly the tax amnesty needs to be adjusted downwards to reflect the actual revenues that were garnered, which is probably nine and a half million plus change or thereabouts. And then the other figures need to be reflective of the actual revenue collections and the projections, considering the numbers that we have on the books up to this point.
Yeah. I would add, Senator, that again, the, the original adoption of 59.3 million in federal res-, uh, federal sources, again, last week, the administration put out a number of 51.909, and that question has to be asked whether an adjustment should be made.
She just told us that 4, 590 million dollars is the anticipated revenue for this year. Four, sorry, did you, excuse me, 490 is the anticipated revenue, less than two minutes ago.
Well, again, there's a number put out last week that differs from the number that we ratified in 2902.
If the woman at BBMR doesn't know, I don't know who does. And I'm going to assume that, Bertha, would you, well, let me ask this question.
And I'm, I'm not trying to get involved in the debate. I'm just stating as chairman, that we ratified in 2902 59 million in federal sources. The main change here is federal sources, and yet one week ago, that number of 59 was corrected and tracking at 51.9. So, you know, when my opportunity comes in there, but I'm sure all of you have that same question too, there has to be also a change in, in the numbers based on, on the tracking of federal sources as well.
So I'll ask again, Bertha, considering everything you know, again, that's how I prefaced my question, considering everything you know, how much are we going to generate this year?
First of all, the, I, I just want to say that the chairman is correct. When we come back with an amendment, an amendment to the revenues based on the most recent actuals as of May, it will reflect the 51 that I presented, I represented last week. We'll still achieve the 470 plus the 21, because there are, all the other categories are going to change correspondingly with the May actuals.
Now, Ms. Chairman, I'll end with this, and I'll request, ma'am, could you please present, could you please present the categories in, as they're described in the breakout portion of the current budget, and give us what you expect those figures to be, so that we can, we can mold those over as a group? And I'm not asking you to amend it, I'm just asking what those variations are going to be from what the original projections are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm very nervous, Mr. Chair, about what I just heard. Because what I just heard was Bertha, before doing this budget, ascribing a number. And that's exactly what I don't want. I've seen that often enough. I don't want any more revenue projections that wind up arriving at the same bottom line number, only the constituent items change. What I want is the actual revenues, that's what I want. So if it's 490, great. If it's 495, great. If it's 485, great. If it's 500, great. But I want it to be based not on a preconceived notion of what number we're trying to arrive at, but what we are actually at. That's what I want to know.
Okay, thank you. Senator Rorris, please.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I want to welcome everybody back for round three.
Round three?
Round three.
Hope it's not a 15-round fight.
And I hope it's not nine weeks either. And I don't think it'll be, Mr. Chairman, because the discussion so far is very pointed and important, that we, we nail down a revenue projection. And I think the opportunity we have here is different from past opportunities where we actually have seven months of collections. Along with what the previous speakers have been saying, I, I already anticipated the governor submitting a bill which would have amended the revenue categories, but instead he just amended federal sources. I have a letter to Bertha Duennias, and she received this 8:00 AM this morning, the acting director of BBMR. Ms. Duennias, did you receive my letter? Yes, and in that letter, I was asking for the same information the previous speaker was asking, for, I was asking for the revenue tracking for fiscal year 2007, incorporating actual cash collections through May, as well as the draft of June cash collections, status of tax amnesty collections for all revenue categories, corporate, individual, withholding, real property and business privilege, grocery receipts, taxes, and actual collection experience for the Dave Santos Amendment, alien labor fees, Guam Police Department fees, and Department of Land Management fees. And I did this knowing full well that it would be fiscally responsible of us as a body and as another branch of government to proceed down this course without adjusting the various revenue categories. There was a lot of discussion made regarding that 454 million dollar base, whether or not that's base tracking, or why was there a 20 million dollar spike. But for me, I've always kept my eye on the bottom line, and although the various categories were adjusted, the bottom line of 470 million dollars remained the same. And so this legislature in 2902, I believe, adopted 470 million dollars. When they made the presentation to the legislature on the revenue tracking of 454 million, the administration also adjusted downward the 30 million in tax amnesty to 6 million. So there, I, there's no spike, because there's a 24 million dollar reduction. The bottom line tracking with that tax amnesty, as well as the other categories, is still 470. And now that we have updated information that we can collect as high as 9 million dollars in amnesty, because of the various adjustments made on other categories, because of the seven-month actual collections, it still seems to me that the same bottom line is 470. And be that as may, the spending requirement is still at 490, is that correct?
That's correct.
So even though we got this 21 million dollar payment from the IRS, it doesn't mean that that's 21 million on top of the 470 that was adopted in 2902. It, it's a wash almost. Yeah, it is. It is, and that's-
It, it, it is on top of the 470, the 470 that was originally, bottom line-
Not on top.
It's, it's 470 plus 21, so it'll be an aggregate of 490, yes.
Well, just, just taking the baseline tracking, not including the fees, because part of the 470 was the 30 million in tax amnesty. So this 21 million replaces that 30 million dollar projection. But, but because of the 14 million dollar anomaly, and the child tax credit, that's where you're still saying that we're okay at the 490 level?
That's, that's correct, Senator. Actually, you know, it's, I've just been doing some scribbles here, and the 454 is, remains intact, and then you have the 9 million, which is, Mr. Logan represented this morning as really probably where it will end up being. That's 463, and then when you add all the other revenue enhancements, even with the adjustment to the visible GRT, that we expect to be just under 700,000 of what was originally adopted in 2902, we will achieve 472.9. And so if we add the 21.1, it'd be 494. So those aggregates are going to come to a finer tune when we do present the final numbers. I'm just kind of scribbling, rounding off to the nearest tenth of a million.
Yeah, I took the presentation you provided to the legislature a week ago, based on April 31st, actual collections, and I booked 8 million, now it's 9 million. But I also, I also gave 100% projection for all the fees, which, you know, I, I want us to be very honest as to whether or not we're going to collect 100% of what we projected for the fees, because remember, this was for six months, but yet the, the budget wasn't passed as quick enough, so it was a four-month collection. I'm sure you have at least six or seven weeks of actual collection experiences, which you could figure out a number closer to what we projected. I'm still showing 16 and a half million dollars short, because I'm not ready to accept the 14 million dollar anomaly until we discuss that. And then, and then because the tax amnesty collection is more nine, more like nine or 10 versus the eight, that's how I can follow that you're saying we're going to be able to meet the actual spending requirement for this fiscal year.
Yeah. Well, I, I respect that you need the explanation for the 14, but that 14 is actual cash that was collected. And whether the body accepts it or not, it is cash this fiscal year. But I will, Art can, Art can come, can break down the 14 million, I'm sure, for, with regard to the anomalies that were presented.
And I understand why, and I appreciate why you would separate this and, and highlight it as an anomaly, because if you booked that as part of the current collections, then your revenue projections for the subsequent years are going to be more overinflated.
That's right. It would, I, I feel that it would artificially inflate the tracking, which I think is wrong, because then it will not give the correct representation of where we are heading with collections. That's the reason anomalies are identified before the tracking exercise is, is done, and then we add it on afterwards.
Mr. Logan, could you explain the 14 million dollar anomaly?
There were several transactions that were not ordinary and necessary, that we felt was not going to happen again next year. Sell of properties, taxpayers coming in and, and making big amounts of payments that were, we felt were not amounts that we would see as being repeated next year. So what we did was we, we took it out, although it's, it's part of the revenues for the year. The Budget Office would like, would ask me, what is not normal, or why did the, why did the, the revenue spike for that month? And we would look at the month, the transactions for that month, and find out what big amounts came in. And we would look at those and see if that was something that would be repeated next year or not, at, at normal course of, of the year. Or if it wasn't, then we would, of course, it's recorded as revenues, but it's not, it's smoothed out when we're, we're trying to come up with the base tracking, so that next year, when we, when the Budget Office, I guess, forecasts, those things are taken out.
Is there, and I want to first congratulate you and the administration for going after this 21 million dollars in reimbursement. Very good job. And it's interesting how some people are saying that this 21 million dollars is a windfall, but in the overall scheme of things, it was just what we needed to bridge us for the remaining three months of this fiscal year. Were there any other federal reimbursements from Section 30 money that was given to the government of Guam that was applied in fiscal year 2007?
Yes, when we asked for the advance last year of, I don't know if it was 57 or 59, 15 out of that was for the, the reserves that we, I guess, investigated with the IRS that wasn't being paid over to Guam. So over the years, I believe from 1978, when, when the first Army Reserve was, was organizing Guam, it was, it wasn't reported. So those amounts, of course, had to be, because they only had figures for a certain amount of years. And what they did was they figured, from what they can get from their records, the accurate amounts, and then for all the other years, they had to, I guess, come up with a number based on how many reservists were there and, and-
But was this 15 part of the current projection for '07? Was that factored?
Yes, that's why the, the, the number was high for the, for Section 30 for that amount.
And then for next year, the Section 30 projection is lower by 13 million, because that has to be out?
Because of that amount that we claimed for the reserves.
But, so, so the, so the IRS gave Guam 21 million dollars, and next year Guam has to give 13 million back from the overage from prior years?
See, what, what-
This 21 million dollars didn't take care of that 13 million dollar overpayment made to the government of Guam?
What we did was we, it's more like an advance, I would say, by, by the federal government. What happens when, when we estimate Section 30 is, Section 30 is received through the year, but we ask for it in advance. So like, come September 30, we're saying we need 40 million dollars for next, for this year. And that's an estimate of what we receive, we're receiving for, for the, for the next year. What has hap-, what has been happening in, in the past? IRS has been reorganizing, and I guess they haven't reconciled as, as quickly as they should. This reconciliation should have been done by August, so we can estimate in September what we're going to get for the next year. And that wasn't done till afterwards. So when the estimates were, were calculated, and I think even in 2003, when we first got that 10 million drop in, in Section 30, I don't know if you remember that, it was because of the reporting of IRS to DOI, the reconciliation wasn't done as promptly as it should have been, because they were reorganizing.
You said you signed the MOU March 11th?
I signed it May, May 2nd.
I mean, sorry, May 11th.
Right, and they, they finalized it.
What, what did you sign in March?
I signed one in February for the, the Garden Reserve, that was 14.9 million dollars. So in addition to the 21, we got 14.9.
But that 14.9 was already reflected, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that's not, I don't want anybody to think that that's new money again.
No, that's already a part of Section 30.
Part of, yeah. And then this letter we received from Frank Ning, the Deputy Commissioner, it was dated June 20th, but your office didn't stamp, receive it until July 2nd.
That's right. That's, that's when we knew DOI, I mean, Department of Treasury or IRS would, would give that amount to Department of Interior, and then Department of Interior would deposit that amount into our account.
You know, as a, as a member here, I'm going to take a very different position than what was already stated. I'm not entirely upset that the legislature did not know about this information, because you needed to keep this information very close to you, because had you had said at the time that, that the government of Guam was expecting this 21 million dollars, even though that wasn't a final amount, I suspect more than likely we would have appropriated against that. And I also suspect that you probably, under advisement from IRS, not to reveal this information until the amount was deposited.
They, they, they specifically told Joe and I to not discuss this or reveal this to the public until the money gets deposited into our account. Because these things change, and also there are, the issue of that 13 million dollars, are they going to give it to us, or are they going to take it back from us, from that 21? What we did was we kind of told them that we are in this need of cash.
How about the 6 million dollar line of credit from the bank? I know that money is booked for '08. Do you, do we have to pay this from the 21?
No, that should come from, as agreed upon on the advance, Section 30, which is at the end of the year.
But you mentioned already on the radio that there was some concern that the Bank of Guam would want this payment made?
Yeah, because I, I, I don't believe they know what that 21 million dollars was for. They probably thought it was an advance of the September 30 amount.
Are you pursuing any other federal reimbursements, like EITC, that unfunded mandate?
We've tried in the past.
Maybe you should just move your office to DC, Department of Treasury and IRS, if you're bringing in this money at this rate. But what's, but are you making efforts to collect EITC or?
From, we've tried in the past. I, I think we even spoke with Congressman Burdahlou, and she got us in contact with the Virgin Islands, who were actively trying at the time to get their, their, their EITC paid back to them, and- And that fell through. So with that falling through, it, it kind of like halted for a while. But it should be an issue that, not just my office, but the whole of Guam.
We're, we're still on amending the federal sources here. But could anyone from the Governor's Fiscal Policy Team or the administration give the legislature an idea? Because they've already, Mr. Chairman, there's pronouncements made that if the legislature doesn't act fast, we're beyond furloughs at this point. We could seriously see a government shutdown. Could any of you tell us the timelines we're dealing with? Notwithstanding, in July two thousand, in February two thousand and three, the administration said, if they don't get this, the government will collapse in July. That didn't happen. Or in February of this year, they said if they don't get this in April, gov. This is a really different scenario, I believe. So notwithstanding those pronouncements, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt. And I want to ask very clearly, if the legislature doesn't take action, by what date will this government shut down because of the, the spend, the need for additional spending authority? Just so we understand timelines.
For, for payroll to be certified.
So we're looking at six weeks?
We're.
Three pay periods?
Three pay periods out from September 30th. There will be insufficient funds to certify payroll.
Mid-August?
Yeah, mid-August, thereabouts.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have other questions with the appropriation level, but can we come back to that, since we're just talking about the twenty-one million?
Appropriations?
Yeah, the governors.
I think what's going to, obviously, we're, we're in the chapter dealing with revenues.
Revenue still, okay, so I'll come back.
So if we can deal with the revenues and we can go back, when it comes to the appropriate expenditure end, those appropriation questions would be relevant.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Speaker, Senator Pangolinan?
Yeah, I'm just going to be very short.
Senior Senator, okay, senior senator.
I'm just going to be very short. I just wanted clarification. You know, Senator, Senator Spish mentioned about furlough and, and, you know, the, the date line that you would have. And you say, Bertha, that you have, you know, your, your projection, you're going to have shortfall of thirteen point three million. And that will be for three pay periods, right? And if the legislature do not act. Now, on, on, on the appropriation, the bill that we have right now, I only count eleven agencies out of thirty-eight that you're addressing. What about the other, the balance of this? The balance of thirty-eight agencies that you have, we, we have listed on the appendix that, you know, for twenty-nine oh-two? What are, what about, you only address eleven departments? Or eight, you know, agencies, department agencies? And out of thirty-eight, which means that there's twenty, twenty-seven agencies that you have not addressed in terms of the cash shortfall and the pay period? So, I, I, I just want a clarification. Are we only talking about this eleven department and agencies? That if we do not pass this budget bill, that they will be closed down?
No, if, if, Senator, if the, if this does, if we were to continue without consideration of this bill, then what I am saying is that the potential for three pay periods to be lacking certificate, the ability to certify for payroll will be there. The tw, the eleven agencies that were addressed in the supplemental are the agencies that are the most critical. The other, the remaining, so it was determined that the operations, fire, corrections, mental health, CAHA, Chamorro Affairs, I believe. They, the rest, if you're talking about the shortfalls for the other agencies, those other agencies, the, the Public Law twenty-nine oh-two also gave the governor some flexibility to transfer funds around. So those are less impacted, they are non-essential. If, if it comes to whether we're going to have the funds to cover them, it would, I think, how we ruled on which makes it to the supplemental table was based on, you know, whether those agencies that did not make it on, on this bill will be addressed to the governor's transfer flexibility to the extent that we can afford to. And we would, and it is my desire and my objective at BBMR to impose a more frugal allotment process with the non-essential agencies, so that they can be forced to live within the cuts that they are now impacted upon. But none of them will be, none of those agencies will, will be short for payroll.
I'm, I'm just going to have to interrupt. We, you know, obviously, we're going to go into the expenditure side. And I know these appropriations, some of these are very good questions, but I'm, I'm wondering if we can, again, let's look into the revenue, resource, the revenue picture here. I'll allow you, again, Senator, you know, senior Senator prerogative, and then we'll get to Senator Pangolinan.
I, I, I heard Berta Duñez mention earlier, Mr. Chairman, that I, I, you know, these are the critical agencies. Okay, and we're talking about the Section Two, right? Of the bill itself? Aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, and the breakdown. And we're talking about eleven agencies there and the, and that are being addressed. And, and so, you know, the eleven agencies are the Guam Fire, Correction, Youth Affairs, DISIT, Department of Mental Health, KDTF, Public Works, Chamorro Affairs, Office of the Public Auditor, CAHA, and Revenue and Taxation. Those are the eleven agencies. I also heard earlier that this bill is a loss out. And I also heard, and this is the reason why I'm, I'm raising this question, I need to clarify in my mind right now. Does the governor need more authorization, perhaps, to address the entire agencies, including the eleven agencies that we have there listed on the bill itself? And do we need to have that? Because you mentioned that we do have the cash. But it needs the authorization to, to spend the cash.
That's, that's correct.
And so, do we need to have this appropriation right now? Or do we need just to, to forget about the, you know, what we have here, but authorize the governor to use the cash available, you know, to, to sustain the, the rest of the department?
I'm, I'm sorry, to just authorize him to use the?
Well, you know, because, because you mentioned, Berta, that you, we do have the cash, but the governor needs the authorization to use it. Okay, so that's, that's a given. So if we were to authorize the governor to use that money for the eleven agencies that are listed here, then would that suffice it? Because there's the differences that I see here is exactly nine million dollars of spending, right? And, and additional spending by all this department that I just listed, except the rest of them that you, you mentioned, the criticalness of the department. You know, I think a lot of these other departments that are addressed are very critical as well. And so, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I need more clarification. Perhaps the other senators can bring forth, you know, many of these questions to clarify.
Thank you, senior senator. Senator in pink, Senator Pangolinan, you have the floor, Senator Pangolinan?
Just, just quickly, I just wanted to know, excuse me, Senator Pangolinan, when does the four hundred and seventy million dollar spending authority, when would you reach that amount? That's, just to clarify, based on Speaker Pingo's question?
Three pay periods out from the close of the fiscal year.
Overall, government-wide?
Government-wide?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, let me correct that, I'm under oath.
Huh, what?
Line agencies only thirteen point three million is only line agency impact.
Thank you.
Okay, Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much. I just want to ask a couple of questions here, because I'm sure this is not the end of the questioning. But if this bill is adopted, what would be the total spending authority? Not cash, not projected revenue, legal authority that the governor can spend if this bill is enacted as-is?
As, as-is? Without amending any other, just?
That's the question.
Just as-is?
Without, if this bill is adopted as presented, what would be the total spending authority that the governor will have for FY two oh oh seven?
About four hundred and ninety to four hundred and ninety-five million.
Follow me here. What is the current, without this bill, what is the current expenditure authority that the governor has under twenty-nine oh-two?
Four seventy, or four sixty-nine, whatever was adopted in four.
Okay.
The spending authority for general fund, four sixty-nine, three six, three forty-six, three forty-seven, four hundred and sixty-nine million.
Now, that was the authority that was given to governor from the collections with the revenue enhancements, correct?
That's correct.
But didn't the governor say, or didn't the administration representatives say, that the autho, the deletion, there was a twenty-five million dollar carry-forward lapses spending authority that the governor was given in twenty-eight, one forty, one fifty?
Correct.
And that they then encumbered up to twenty million dollars of that carry-forward lapses prior to the adoption of twenty-nine oh-two, correct?
That's correct.
So that's, that twenty-nine million, twenty-five million, which was then de-appropriated in twenty-nine oh-two, but the encumbrances remain and were thought to be legal?
That's, that's correct.
So then you came and we de-appropriated that twenty million. The encumbrance is still up there. It's a liability.
Yes.
It's an expenditure level that occurred. And then we allowed the governor, on top of that twenty million that we reduced in twenty-nine oh-two, we then appropriated in four seventy. So if you take the twenty million in outstanding liability that have been encumbered against from appropriation that's been deleted, not adjusted now, not charged against any new revenues in twenty-nine oh-two, which is now four seventy.
Yes.
So wouldn't you take that twenty million in expenditure that's already been done, add it to the new level of increased revenues and revenue enhancements of four seventy, and add it on top of that? So his total spending authority is at four ninety?
No, I, I would not, because I'm.
But that's what happened.
No, that's not what, well, that's what happened prior to my taking over BBMR.
All right, so prior to that, then, prior to your taking over, the governor's total spending expenditure authority, including the carry-forward lapses encumbrances?
Yes.
If you add it to the authorized level, the new authorized level in twenty-nine oh-two, would have been four ninety?
Yes.
Right, so that's where we're at. Without any changes, again, in this bill as adopted and as presented, we're increasing the revenue another twenty-one million, and we're allowing him to spend that twenty-one million. So you would add that in my walkthrough, without any adjustments yet?
Yes.
The total revenue then, or expenditure authority that the governor now has, if this bill is adopted as-is, would be five hundred and?
Ten.
Ten.
Yes.
Right, so obviously, we don't want to give, I don't want to give the governor five hundred and ten in expenditure authority, and adjustments need to be made.
That's correct, and the adjustments were made.
Where were they made? And was the legislature informed that these adjustments are made, are being made, will be made? And under what authority are they being made?
Well, it was my assessment upon taking the helm at BBMR that the interpretation of adding on the encumbrances, the expenditures and encumbrances through May, prior to the passage of twenty-nine oh-two, would be grossly irresponsible, if not illegal. Because when the presentation was made to the legislature in the revised two thousand, in the revised budget, the governor came in with a la, an item, department by, agency by agency level, proposed revised level, which was, which was intended to cover the entire fiscal year's needs for operations. So therefore, the level should encompass and should embrace the first five months of the fiscal year. So those, so it was my determination that Public Law twenty-nine oh-two is the right authorized level and probably the legal level that we should be using, although I'm not legal. But as a matter of policy, I feel that even if it was recognized that we can have five hundred and ten, that I will still keep the expenses to the four seventy, four ninety, if this one passes.
Did the governor fire you because you didn't want to do what he wanted you to do before?
I, I, Senator, I don't want to go there, but I did, I did, I did advise the governor on, on this.
I know that, I know you don't want to go there, but just, is it a yes or no?
I'm sorry?
Did he fire you because you didn't want to do what he wanted to do before? That you thought was irresponsible? Okay, you, you, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
He'll do it again. When you decide to do what is responsible, and he doesn't think that that is the responsible way to act, without a change in law here, I think he'll do it again. Because he has demonstrated time and time again that he will do what he thinks he wants to do, regardless of the law, just as he did with this COLA, where he's certified to the bank, that the legislature authorized him by law that he can withdraw that money for one single purpose, to pay the COLA payments pursuant to the court judgment. He took the money. He certified that that's what he was going to do, and then he paid something else. If you were there, Ms. Duñez, and you had to certify payment of those funds for a purpose other than what was authorized by law, would you do it?
No.
You're right. Yet, somebody was sitting there, and he did that, and they did it, and they allowed him to do it. You won't. And maybe we should permanize your position in law too, so that you can guard him. But that's the example, I'm saying, that without changes in this law, without bringing in every arm of this government to check these actions that this governor is taking, that I think are contrary to law and irresponsible physically and financially, he'll do it. And that's my problem with the way this bill is presented. Without those changes being made in law, we have no recourse. In other words, if we don't reduce the expenditure authorities by that twenty million for those encumbrances and have those charged to the authorized level in twenty-nine oh-two, as you rightly call it, and I want to say a hundred, a thousand percent agree with you that that's the proper and legal way to act, I don't trust that this governor will do it. If he sees an opportunity to do something else. And that's the danger. Because he has demonstrated to me, time and time again, that maybe he, in his mind, he'll say, I'm not telling a lie, but he said, but I know what he does. He says, I know the truth and I won't tell it. And that's the way he's acting. And, and, and this cannot proceed as presented. And, and, and this cannot proceed as presented, because I just don't understand, when the governor presented the bill, that set the 490 expenditure level, would furloughs have been required, if those revenues were achieved? In 2902, when we gave the budget for 2902 at 491 expenditure level, okay? Would furloughs have been required?
Actually, to my, to my recollection, wasn't 2902 at 470, not 490? Oh, but you're talking about the prior encumbrances on the previous law, would it have been required? If it was recognized, if those prior encumbrances were recognized as part of the legitimate expenses, no. Because that then would take care of the authorized level that we needed.
And what is the total authorized level with this bill?
490.
So why, why is it that on those end, in 2902, recognizing a 490 expenditure level requires furloughs, recognizing a 491 revenue level in this bill would not require a furlough?
Okay.
Is it just the cash?
Well, in, in, in 2902, it was 470. If you recognize what's already been spent, up to 20 million, then that would have been 490, the spending level.
And that's exactly what the administration told us, that we already spent that money, so you have to recognize it. So while you may be sitting in that seat that says, "I won't recognize that," the administration, when they came down here, which you were not a part of, told us that, "No, we have to account for that, because we already spent it. We already encumbered against it."
Okay, but if, if we recognize that, at this point, then we won't be here. But because I advised the governor, that that may be an improper way to treat that, we need to disencumber what, I mean, charge to the 2902 levels, and we need to go into it, for authority to spend this. So it's just, you know, recognizing that that's not the proper way to go, and, and then, now we need this spending authority.
So in a time of financial crisis, where we need to cut back on expenditure, the governor is asking us to spend increased expenditures by 21 million dollars? Basically is the bottom line? He's saying, "We have a problem, folks, we have to live within our means, we have to cut back, we have to sacrifice, so let me spend 21 more million dollars?" What kind of fiscal policy is that?
Well, I, I don't know, I, I guess what I would offer to that, is that, to that, Senator, is, we spent, we had spending authority of 470. When 2902 passed, fiscal policy advised the governor that furloughs have to go to, into effect, and that was where we went, almost immediately after 2902, I believe the following week. But then, I believe a week or so later, the AG came out with her, the information, informational memo, I don't believe it was a legal opinion, that says that we may be heading down something improper, in view of the restriction in 2902, that we would have to lay off first unclassified employees before we can furlough classified employees. So, we were caught between that, and having to exercise, the last, having, advising the governor to exercise the last alternative, which is to take, use his 15% transfer flexibility from GPSS, UOG, GCC, which if we were to satisfy the need for the line agencies of 18 million shortfall, it would be about 7.5% of their, of their total appropriation, those education agencies, which because we're in the fourth quarter, it would impact nearly 30% of their fourth quarter funding. And I don't think that it would be realistic at all, to expect for the governor to use that transfer flexibility. So, as we were grappling with that decision, or continuing, and the other alternative was to ignore the AG's opinion on the furloughs, and, and proceed with the furloughs, and answer in court, should it be brought to court. And John, John here referred to that as, you know, the savings that we were going to be, it probably wouldn't be worth it, was in a nutshell. So, that's where we're at. So then, this, this windfall, residual, whatever you want to call it, and federal sources came along, and we figured this was the answer, to just get us through the fiscal year, and in fiscal year 2008, we are continuing cost containment, and we're just a couple of months away from another budget, and I can say to this body, that my goal would be to continue to reduce spending, and, and control the allotment process in, in, in the manner that it should have been done for this fiscal year, when we knew that some of those appropriation levels were not supportable by cash.
Okay, I, just one, one question, just to demonstrate and illustrate, you know, the severe problem I have, with the way that this proposal is being presented, and it's a little bit on expenditure level, but I'll only use one example. When the, when the legislature and the governor passed public law 28149 and 28150, that was the good budget, it was a realistic budget, we were going to not require layoffs, everybody's job was saved, hallelujah. But I look at this, and I look at, for example, the wildfire department, total appropriation in 28149 and 150 before any crisis struck, that they said, "This is a solid budget," was an appropriation level of 23,887,837. In this proposal, now the governor's telling us, that unless he gets 24,887,643, he's going to have a crisis and he's going to lay off people. He's increased expenditures by a million dollars, from a department that backing, and you weren't there, so this, this is, you know, not directed at, at you, and not, not expected for you to respond to. Back there, in October, or August, or September, whenever 281, 149 and 150 was passed, that said, everything's hunky-dory, no, no tax increases needed, no fee increases needed, we're going to run the government based upon these revenues, and so forth, we only needed 23 million dollars for fire. Now that we got all these crises, he's saying, that unless I get 24 million dollars, and that goes for just about every department and agency, as a matter of fact, for, for, I'll fudge here a little and give another example, for Kaha, unless he doubles the budget from 28, from 28149 and 150, he's going to lay some people off, because the, the expenditure level in 28150 and 149 for Kaha was 312, and now he wants 611,000 under this new budget. He wants to double that. But back then, 311 was enough, without threats of furloughs, without the need for tax increases, without the need for fee increases. It doesn't make sense. The trustworthiness of this numbers as presented by the governor, and there's nobody else that are presenting this number, except the governor, in my opinion, is just not there for me, and I can't accept this budget as presented. We must dissect it, and we must ensure that we don't give him a 510 new expenditure authority, you know, because he just won't be responsible, and I don't think he has been. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and when we get into the expenditure side, I'm sure we'll have more questions. And there are many other que- I won't go into the, trying to discern, you know, whether or not I can trust him on June 5th, with standard on course versus, you know, May 17th with the legislature here. All of that's been said, and, and I tell you, they just, they don't add up. And, and it's going, I thought he could rebuild some trust when he becomes, you know, when he, when he's forthcoming. It's obvious, it's obvious that while we all raise our hand and swear we're going to tell the truth, it's not the whole truth as I know that what the truth is. It's the whole truth, just on what you asked me, and I'm going to wink, because I know something you don't, but it really is relevant to the question, but since you weren't on point, I'm not going to reveal it. Maybe that's good for court, but this is public policy, and public information, and public record that we're trying to discern here. We're not trying to outdo each other in court here and get somebody off as not guilty or guilty. We're trying to discern the best course of action, and we're supposed to be open and forthcoming. So if we know the truth, you asked me about it, and it's not on point, but I know that it's relevant to the point you're asking, I should tell you the whole truth, and not just part of it. Now, I know you're telling me the whole truth, and I know people that we've asked questions have told the whole truth, but some instances, some people were just told, "Don't say this part." And, and unless we break that circle, we're never going to reestablish trust, and the governor's not going to at least demonstrate, and hasn't to this day, his trustworthiness with regards to information coming out of his office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Pangolino. Vice Speaker Campbell?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Before I go into my original question, I just want to follow up, a little bit on the line of questioning by the previous speaker, again, because there is some confusion. First, before I do that, I want to, again, thank Bertha for her candid remarks. Bertha, I'm glad you're there, and again, I, I've seen you work, you're, you're straight up, and again, I'm hopeful that, again, as you move along, in, in making the tough decisions that a BBMR director has to make, is that whatever political pressures are thrown on you, that you can, again, perform your duties, and I've seen that, so far, you've done, you've done a very good job.
And if I may just interrupt, and this time if the governor fires you, I'll make room for you at my office.
But, I just, okay.
Bertha is a valuable member of the team, she's well-respected.
You'd have to take a number, Mr. Speaker.
And has a wonderful working relationship with the governor, and some of, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Now, let me go, let me follow up on the question. Again, I recall the Bill, and I have to go back to Bill 74. When the administration presented Bill 74 to the body, and obviously, we saw the spending plan, everyone was going to take their cuts, from the particular agencies, and I recall also, the administration stating that, again, with the governor's lump sum area of appropriations, it needed to be backed up by actual revenues, not lapses. And of course, at that particular juncture, when the discussion and debate was going on, we weren't aware of the fact, that already 20 million dollars had been encumbered, of the 25 million dollars that had been appropriated through the use of lapses. The, upon the passage of, of 2902, when we saw the numbers, and if you look at the numbers, when you see the actual real appropriations, you see all the cuts that are occurring with many agencies, and again, with the governor's lump sum budget, you actually saw a $6 million reduction, based on real appropriations, because again, it was the administration that came to us and says, "We want to eliminate that portion of the bill, that deals with the appropriation of what they, again, we recall phantom appropriations of, of lapses." And at the time that was occurring, again, we, we took that provision out, and we saw the, the, the $6 million cut. Of course, as things moved along, and information came, came to, to the committee and to the legislature, and with the passage of 2902, it became fa- again, apparent, that 20 million had already been expended of the, of the lumps, of the, of the, of the lapse appropriation. If you take that into, if, if you take into consideration, what was given in appropriations on 2902, to the governor, governor's lump sum budget, and then you were to add already the expenditures of the 20 million, it appeared that there was a $14 million actual increase in that lump sum budget. And that's why, I just want to be very clear now, from the, some of the statements that you've made, Bertha, there is reversal. So what is occurring now, and, and just correct me, is that now the decision has been made to disencum- that what we thought were already 20 million in encumbrances, now that number has changed, that you are now disencumbering them, because?
No, they're not, they're not being disencumbered, but they are being, how do you say, quantified or included in the level that was delivered by 2902.
What, what I'm wondering now is, because it was, again, we're at 4, 469, plus a couple of million on, on, on other resources, so 471, now that 471 was, was a spending level, so with that 20 million, that 20 million is a part of the 471?
That's, that's what I'm saying, and with all due respect to the body, it was a, a policy that I decided was going to impose.
So that change has occurred, as a result, Bertha, of just your decision?
That's right.
Okay.
So, we've covered over the expenditures and encumbrances of the first five months, into the levels that were given to the agencies in 2902.
So with that, with that in mind, because the original numbers, and actually, that's what would have occurred, if we saw the original, I mean, if, again, we passed 2902 as-is, and you had not spent any of the 20, 25 million dollar appropriation, so in, in reality, there would have been a $6 million reduction on appropriations to the governor's general lump sum appropriation, correct?
6 million?
Well, obviously, because there was now a, a elimination of the lump sum 25 million dollar appropriation, but then it was backfilled by real appropriations through different sources, through, of course, increase in revenues.
Right.
So, am I to understand then, now, the original appropriation of 2902, where you see this $6 million reduction in the governor's lump sum budget, that has occurred, and you've kept to that limit?
Yes.
Okay, so what is that?
Well, the 20, public law 149, 150, authorized 25 million, I believe, in lapses, and 8 million from, from a savings that would be derived from the refinancing of the '93 water bond, which didn't happen, and also, there was a $5.7 million general fund, actual, actual general fund source appropriation, and a few other, like dormant accounts, the, from the dormant accounts, from the balances of the GTA proceeds, et cetera. But I'm not, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, but the lump sum agencies were authorized a level of 45.1, I'm not sure if I'm answering your questionnaire, but if you can help me, that was reduced to the authorized level in 2902, to 40.1, so yes, it was around a reduction of about 5 million, yes.
So with, and, and the, the concern I have there now, is I'd like, I'd like to get an idea of where you are at that spending area now, because one of my concerns, when we went through the public hearings in February, or the round, the roundtables and the public hearings, that it was quite coincidental that also, the allotment releases for those governor's lump sum agencies were the ones that were in the 70, 80 to 100% area, in terms of release of allotment, and, and these were the agencies that were outside of, of the, I actually say, within the governor's line agencies. So what my concern is, where are you at this point, have, has the governor, at, at that 40 million dollar level, what is the condition of the governor's line agencies lump sum? Because again, what I'm concerned about now is, even halfway through the fiscal year, it had, the allotments released to those particular agencies were already way above what the original appropriation level was, which was about $6 million, above what, or 5 to 6 million dollars, what was ratified in 2902.
Well...
And I understand that you have transfer authority, but I'm just wondering, how does it look, barring any transfers, where, where is that, that?
Well, I can't, I cannot tell you right now where we're at, as far as releases on allotments, but there's a couple of things that I will tell you, and that is, I will certainly keep it within the 40 million off- I will certainly keep it within the 40 million authorized level. That is a given. The other thing is that the reason some of those allotments, some allotments to agencies were reaching beyond the 50% level at the time you were conducting that hearing, Mr. Chairman, is sometimes, I believe, for some of them, it may not be true for all of them, but for some of them, I think it has to do with contractual obligations wherein, even though the cash commitment or the cash need for that, for a particular contract would not be needed until it would be phased out through month to month, the encumbrance, in order for the contract to be led and go through the approval process, it needs, we need, BBMR needs to encumber the entire worth of the contract, even though the spending on that contract is going to be on a 12-month basis. So that could be some of the, how that is explained. Maybe not all of it fits into that explanation, but that's all I can enlighten you for now.
Actually, I'm just saying the statements you've made are, again, a marked deviation from the statements made earlier. The, and I do note that on the agencies that are listed here for appropriation, what I can recall has been, what was part of that lump sum was, I think, Public Works. So it's G.
Yes, Public Works.
H, Cultural Heritage and Arts, right? J, Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities, and K, Revenue and Taxation, correct?
Revenue and Taxation.
Was that? I think that was part of...
Military Affairs.
Military Affairs.
Labor, Governor's Office, State Clearinghouse.
No, but I'm saying what's in your current bill. The current bill that you have sent over to us, it was, which ones are they? I just want it for clarity.
For supplemental?
Yeah, for supplement that were included in the lump sum, it would be, not A.
Oh, okay.
Tell me, A, was that included in the lump sum?
No.
No, B?
No.
C?
No.
D?
D, no.
E?
No. No.
G, G was?
Yes.
H? I think so.
Yes.
I, no, no, not I. J?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, H, Cultural, Tomorrow Affairs?
Yeah.
Yes.
And J?
I.
I don't think I, oh, I, I.
I, no.
Okay, K?
J, Kaha, yes.
And K, right?
And K, yes.
Okay, thanks. Now, thank you very much. Let me go back into my original question. The, and I'm going to go back to what the Bill 1S and I'm looking at line 13. And again, under federal sources, you have scratched out $59,329,029.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
Now, your new number figure is $80,504,778,35, right?
Yes.
Now, what is the difference there?
The difference is $21,175,749 and 35 cents.
Okay. Now, I go back to the questions that were brought up earlier by Senator Tenorio. If you look on the spreadsheet that was provided last week for FY07 for federal sources, you show a number tracking for '07 of $51,909,348. That is, is that the number that the administration is looking at as the actual number for federal sources for '07?
That is the number that, at the time that the tracking was performed for actual collections through May, I'm sorry, through April, is reading that it's tracking $51.9 million, which is that one.
So with that, obviously, you see a difference of about two, how mu, I'm sorry, how much is that? Seven?
59 and 51?
Yeah, 51, 59. What's the exact dollar? I don't have a calculator with me. What would that be, Bertha?
I will.
$59,329 and $29. And now you're tracking at $51,909,348. I left my calculator up there.
909,348. The difference is $7,419,681.
681. So again, the question I asked, if you've made the change on, based on the $21 million infusion from the, from section 30, excuse me, from the federal government's settlement with the rev and tax, should that number then reflect your new adjusted $51,909,348 figure? So that would in fact not give you $21 million, but you would take $7,400,000 out? Shouldn't the $59,329 be adjusted to what your baseline is now?
Oh, yes. No, you're correct. In the, Mr. Chairman, in the end, when we redo the revenues, it will read the tracking up through actual collections for May. It will reflect in that federal sources category, the $51.1, which is the tracking, or, well, it will be updated by whatever we're tracking as of May, which will be presented to the body. But the $21 million will come as an adjustment at the end.
So what would occur is you will then present to us, when it comes to federal sources in Bill 1S, that on line 13, the administration will not, will amend the $59,329,029 to the number that was just represented?
No, no, sir. The $59 million will need, this is based on Public Law 2902. So we need to reflect this number to make that adjustment. However, in the changes that are going to occur throughout, in the update of the revenue tracking, it will reflect that $51 million or whatever change that may turn out to be.
Oh, I'm just wondering if, since you've stated, represented to us, it's $51.9.
Yes.
Should you not then, in this particular line item area, scratch out the 59?
No, I understand what you're saying, sir, but this is already in law, so we need to amend this number.
So actually, what should have, I guess, the proper way this could have occurred was that the administration, based on presentation last week, should have sent over a bill, for clarity's sake, that should have represented $51,909,348 as the new category for federal sources and then with the additional $21 million on top of that as the new money's coming in. So the new base tracking should have been $51,909 and then, of course, with this new number. Actually, would have, then, the number should not be $80 million, but it should be $72.5 million, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Calvo. With that, the legislature will recess until tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m.